All right, we're a few minutes away. We are recording and I am working getting the Facebook Live video going. Should be able to start at six or just a couple of minutes after. Oh wow, this is different. They've changed the way going live works.
Right when you think you have it figured out, they change something.
Seriously, you are not kidding.
And you want to hear something else crazy?
Yeah.
You know we have B. Roberts on the board now?
We're slowly taking over the world.
Yes.
That's right.
My dad's name, my dad's name is Robert. I don't know if that counts.
Oh, there we go. There we go. We'll include you in the club.
Okay, thanks.
Not a bad thing.
None of this Republican and Democrat nonsense. It's Robs and not Robs.
Right.
How's the weather up there?
We're way up here in Fourth Ward. It's not too bad.
It's better here in Florida.
Oh, that's right. I forgot you were down there.
Actually has been bad weather. It's been raining every day, but it's Florida. It's 80.
Yeah.
We like it.
I'm sure you're suffering. Which part of Florida? East or west coast?
East coast, right by West Palm Beach.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, Boynton Beach. It's nice.
Oh, one of my best friends from fourth grade lives there.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, my mom lives here. It's nice to finally see her.
Yeah, I bet that's really special.
Okay. Andy and Dave, are you both on?
Yeah, Rob, we're on.
We're here.
All right, great. And Marie, Judy, you guys are here?
Yes. I'm here. Thank you.
Denise said she may be a couple of minutes late. Um, I see Mark here. I know we have, I'm trying to think of trustees. Who haven't seen it. Craig on?
Craig is on. I don't know where Emily.
My name.
All right.
I don't see Emily, but she could be here.
Hi, Marie.
Hi.
Let me check with Emily and see.
Marie has a real hum in her phone somewhere.
You, you hear that too?
Yeah.
Well, that's great. I mean, it's not great for Marie and her sound, but there's this weird extra sound in your speaking. Now I don't hear you. Keep trying, Marie. We, we don't have you. Maybe replug that cable in.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it just kind of has a funky sound to it. That's all. Can you guys hear okay?
I can.
Yeah, I can hear. It just sounds feedback, a little feedback there from something.
There's some weird digital noise. It would be nice if we can return to normal meetings and not have to spend the first five minutes going. Do you hear me? Do you hear me? Okay. Um, I'm gonna give, oh, Emily, you're here? Great. All right, Emily, such, oh, there's, there's Emily somewhere. Okay, Emily is here. I am going to call the meeting to order at 6:03 PM on the 20th. We're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance, which I do have up on the screen. It's pretty custom to mute your video. Also, please mute your audio. So when you're signing the pledge, you don't have six different versions overlapping. I'm going to stand up and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Couple of quick reminders as we go. Standard approach. We'll start first with the roll call by Marie and then I'll go over the adjectives.
Okay, we'll call Mayor Allen.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes, here.
Trustee Dr.
Yeah.
Trustee Dr.
Trustee Murphy.
Here.
O'Malley.
Here.
Trustee Fine.
Here.
Attorneys Gilchrist and Engel.
And we'll confirm we're both here. Thanks, Marie.
Thank you.
All positive.
All right, thank you very much. And just a quick reminder, when you're not speaking, please mute your audio and you are encouraged to use headphones. Ideally headphones with a mic, although it's not necessary. So there's no feedback loop created. And if two or more of you are watching in the same room, please make sure to only have one person's audio on. We have a very big amount of business on the meeting and I just do want to say a personal thank you to the board for allowing us to put this off a week. It's hugely appreciated by me um, so that we could get a little bit more ready to go for this. I'm gonna go through the announcements. Trustees, if you have your email, um, I will be just kind of telling you which documents I'm referring to when I'm looking at certain things. The first announcement we have is we got a letter, we received a letter from Huzick Rising and Marion Soakovar. It's regarding the COVID relief funds, which will obviously be something that we talk about as we're going through our budget and our budget hearing. Um, Marion, are you on?
Yes, I am on.
Hi, Marion. How are you?
Good.
Uh, we have received your letter. If you, do you want to speak to it, summarize a few things for people who haven't seen it?
Um, sure. Basically, we have put together, and Huzick Rising thinks of these things all the time. How can we promote tourism in the village? How can we help area businesses become whole? How can we help them through the COVID and any lack of businesses that they, they have, business they had? And so when this relief bill was signed, we said, you know what? We have quite a few projects in the works that are suited to helping recoup the lost dollars in tourism and bring people into the village. And we decided that we would put them all together in a, in a package so that you could see how as a, as a whole group, this could really go a long way into creating some recoup for, not only, I think, I talked about it helping businesses, but quite frankly, it goes a long way to helping everybody because when you help the businesses, you're helping people also open new businesses. You're, you're bringing new people to town. You're giving them a reason to move here. And you're, uh, when you have a successful downtown, it looks better. It's, it's, everything about it is, is different. And we have seen that occur despite the fact that we've had a terrible year, everybody. And we just think that with a little bit of help, uh, this could just skyrocket. So one of the things was to bring signage to Route 7, which people have talked about for years. But we have gotten permission for, just as you pull over 7 under 22, there's a small pull off, not the big parking lot, but the small pull off. And that is an area where we would like to hang the village map and any small signage that shops and businesses in downtown would like to put there, showing where people could stop if they drove into town. Also showing the sites throughout the town, not just in downtown proper. And we would also like to, we would also like to redo the map to include the new businesses and have that in that kiosk. And I'm sorry, I didn't start at number one. Number one was the sign at 7 and South Street. Again, we have permission to put that sign there. And it is a sign which would indicate the historic downtown and the fact that there are restaurants, shops, battlefield, a brewery, and at least the opportunity to stop somewhere else than, than directly on Route 7. And the other thing that we had talked about for the last couple of years was putting up a billboard at the entrance to Tibbetts. It's one of the most visible billboards. And having, again, we have some graphic designers who were willing to design that for us and put together a representation of all the businesses on that billboard. Again, including things like the battlefield and the museum.
Mary Ann.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt. Are you, are you able to stay on this call for a bit as we move over into the public hearing? Um, and discuss the budget side of things and, and so on. Are you able to stay on for that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And the other thing is I know you listed out the sign, the billboard, the, mentioned the, the map, the kiosk map of area. The reprinting of the maps. I know you haven't mentioned it yet, but your letter mentioned expansion of the Walter A. Wood Tractor Show, new Christmas decorations for the village. Historic signage store boards. If you were to prioritize those, what would be like the top two or three things you think would be the, the thing that you guys are most pressing on, or you think would have the most effect?
Well, the map kiosk, we think is important because it does give the sights for the whole town. The sign at 7 and, and it doesn't actually cost very much. The sign at Route 7 and South Street again is not really that expensive and does give people direction to the historic village. The Christmas decorations fall through the cracks every single year and they look really bad. So we just really would like the village to make that a priority because bringing people into town during the holiday season is important for everybody. One of the most important things that ties everything together is the historic society's signage throughout the village. If you're gonna direct people to a historic downtown, there should, should be something, and we have a ton of history. We just don't have it anywhere other than at the historic society, which, you know, is, they do a phenomenal job, but is not open every day of the week, all day long. So having a storyboard which mentions Grandma Moses, having a plaque where she was discovered, I mean, they mentioned her in the Norman Rockwell Museum with this great story about how Norman Rockwell discovered her in Huzick and in Deb's shop. And yet we don't have a plaque at Deb's shop saying, this is where Norman Rockwell discovered Grandma Moses. We don't, you know, we don't really have signage to her, her grave. We don't have, we'd like to put a storyboard at the Walter A. Wood Bridge because the significance of standing at that bridge and peering across to almost nothing there when there were 60 football fields worth of manufacturing at one time is significant. That's why our, our village is here almost in the first place. It's why it's as large as it is and significant as it is. So, um, it does give people, when you say historic downtown, once you get to downtown, it shows them why it's historic.
Right. Trustees, do you want to ask questions now or sort of come back around, circle back around to it as we discuss budget?
I think we should circle back.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Marion. And thank you for being able to stay on as we, as we move through the rest of this.
Okay.
All right. Uh, next item we had was a letter from Terry Burdick. This is document number three, trustees. If you have this, if you have it in your email, uh, she was expressing some concerns about the Fourth Ward Playground. Uh, this is the one over by Jackson Street and Kelly Street. I brought up a couple of these to Neil and I spoke with Bruce as Neil's out of town right now. With the reason we don't have the swings up is because I think the old ones did not make it through the last season. She brought up the idea of some form of a better chain with a protection so the fingers don't get pinched. Looking at toddlers and small children needing appropriate sized equipments, a little bit of maintenance. I just wanted to pass this on, trustees. I know we do have a line in our budget, both this current year and next year. So I think, um, if it's all right with you guys, I think it may be worth, um, looking into some of these, um, working with the, the Neil and the trustee who's gonna be in charge of parks. Any thoughts, trustees?
Yeah, that, that seems reasonable, Rob, I think.
Okay. Well, if you have any other thoughts on that, please, um, please speak up. Um, I, I agree, Terry. I know my, uh, family is over there as often as we can be right now. Um, and it's a nice place, but it definitely does need some, some more focus and attention. Yeah.
Real quick, just so you know, Bruce was working on that today and getting some pricing and swings and looking at the playground already. So that is already started.
All right. Great. Thank you, Marie. So things are starting to move. So if you could, um, well, I guess if, I guess we'll, we'll try to reach out to Terry and just give her heads up that things are happening. All right. Great. Uh, next one, we had a letter from Lovejoy regarding a request to amend the zoning map as it relates to their property. Andy, is it okay if I share this over the, the screen here?
Yes, it is. It was submitted to you. It's a public document.
All right. And then if you want to speak a little bit to that, because I think it'd be better to hear from you than from me. Let me find it. Here we go. Just bear with me for one minute. I have about a thousand windows open, so I have to find the right one to share. Do you guys see the letter right now?
Yes.
All right, great.
So if Mark is on the meeting as well, he can kind of fill in some factual background on this quickly, but this is a request by a property owner within the village for a proposed amendment to the village's zoning map to change the zoning designation, designation for part of the property on which they operate a business. It's my understanding they're looking to add some parking, but the area, the proposed parking on the zoning map is not in the business, but rather in a residential district. And so this is a request by the property owner to have the village board consider an amendment to the zoning map to rezone that portion of the property. Mark, did I state that factually correctly?
Yes, Sandy, uh, excuse me. What's going on is there's two lots back there behind the business and anybody familiar with the area knows that, uh, they're kind of using it as parking now, but it's, it's rough. It's, you know, I think it's just dirt. So the two parcels, one of them is in, is zoned with the rest of the property. The other one is zoned in R3 or R2. So they're just asking that that other lot be included with their property.
Right. So procedurally, when you receive a petition, this isn't a form of a letter, but a petition to request a zone change, it's within the discretion of the board. If the board does want to proceed, since the zoning code and zoning map were adopted through local law, you would direct that a local law be prepared to amend the zoning map as requested. It would then need to be introduced, a public hearing scheduled and go through that procedure. But right now, it's simply in the, in the form of a petition by the property owner and it's within the, the discretion of the board if you want to entertain it.
Mark, is there an exit or entrance on that end of the building?
Uh, I think there is, Kevin, but now that you say that, I can't quite picture it.
No, I don't think there is. I just wondered how they'll access the, uh, the property unless they build a door somewhere.
There must be.
I would think there has to be. Yeah.
So I think what would be appropriate, if the board does want to entertain it, is to get ahold of the property owner. What should accompany this? Right now is simply in the form of a letter, but, and I know they're referencing the zoning map, but kind of a sketch of their, their proposal. I don't know, Mark, if you have that in your office yet or not. So that the board has a full understanding of what the proposal is. You're looking at it from purposes of changing the zoning district classification, but questions like this are certainly relevant. They should also be submitting an environmental assessment form since an amendment to the zoning map is subject to seeker. All of that should come in to the board for review. And again, if the board is willing to entertain this, you can direct me to prepare the appropriate local law form that would allow the amendment of the zoning map. And this could then be introduced and you can move forward with the process at your May meeting.
Andy, with the, with the property or the parking area have to be paved or stone, or is that just up to the company itself?
No, actually, it's a two-step process, Kevin. Right now, in front of the Board of Trustees would simply be the zoning classification. But to actually put the use in, in subject to Mark's review, it may require site plan review by the planning board. And that'd be more of a planning function. If it doesn't need to go to the planning board and it's simply a building department determination, then the, then the building department would look at it. And we'd have to look at what's required under your code for parking areas as well in connection with commercial uses.
Somebody asked if there's a entrance on the back of the building. This is the Lovejoy right by the railroad tracks in Opticon Realty, right?
Yes.
Yeah. If you go on Google Street View, there is a back door on the, the side away from the tracks.
That's on Cary Avenue?
Yes, Cary Avenue side.
So I just have a question, uh, since we're talking about it and Andy's answering questions. So would we be approving a change to make that parcel a different use? Not, we wouldn't be saying that it's okay to be a parking lot. We would be saying it's now changed over to this use and could be used for anything acceptable for that use in the village.
You're correct, Craig.
So they could, they could have an industrial building there or something like that.
And that's a consideration for the board. When you do put the, the parcel into a new, new zoning district, you're not limiting the use to what's being proposed now. That parcel could then be used in the future for any of the allowable uses under your zoning law within that district. So that, that's what the board should consider in determining whether to move forward with this and entertain it.
Andy Dean online is asking if they're, if they could just get a variance. Is that something that's possible?
Another way to approach this is yes, they could apply for a use variance. Then the zoning board would need to apply the use variance standards. I will tell you in general, use variances have a fairly high threshold for approval. One of the elements does include the inability to get a reasonable economic return for any of the allowable uses in the current zoning district. That, that's, that's a fairly high standard, but that'd be within the zoning board's discretion. But the answer is yes, you, you could address this situation through a use variance application as well. The use variance would be limited to parking. That's, that would be the distinction, Craig, between a zoning change through the Board of Trustees and a use variance through the zoning board.
Well, I guess the, the first question is, as a board, are we in support of this? I don't see why not. I, I, I'm, I'm good with it. And then if we're all good with it, the second question is, um, maybe we.
I'm in favor, but.
It's not gonna change life as we know it in Huzick Falls, right? So then I'm a favorite, in favor.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we should support our local businesses and if this is gonna help them do business, but you know, we have to do our, do, I, I would, wouldn't mind looking at the zoning map and driving by once before we, before I say I'm gonna, you know, what I'm gonna decide, but I definitely think we should do this if we can.
I'll make a copy of the zoning map and I'll show you guys exactly what we're talking about. And once you look at that, I think you'll think that it.
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna do it tonight anyway. So yes, I think we should definitely move forward with figuring out how we're gonna do this.
Right. So understand this is, this is a couple of month process anyway. If you want to move forward, I would prepare a simple local law to amend the zoning map. That additional information should come in, in the interim, get an environmental assessment form from the petitioner as well as any general map that you'd, you'd like in terms of what the proposal is. Again, the zone change wouldn't be limited to that proposal, but I think it, it's gonna help the board in determining whether to kind of actually move forward and amend the zoning map. At your May meeting, that local law would be introduced in a public hearing set. And then presumably at your June meeting, it entered, you open, hear comments through the public hearing and then you'd be in a position to act upon the requested zone change to change the zoning map. So it is a couple of month process. Just be aware of that procedure.
Mark, anything else you want to add?
Nope.
All right. So it sounds like we're all in support of this. Um, and Andy, would you be the person to reach out or do you want Marie to reach out and start that process going? Or Mark, how do you want to do that?
I apologize for that. I think Mark should, should reach out. You've been dealing directly with the property owner, Mark. Let them know that the board is gonna move forward with that process and I'll be drafting the, the local law for introduction at the May meeting. And if I, uh, anyone wants to reach out to me directly, that's fine too, from the property.
Great. All right. Thank you, Andy. Thank you all for that. Uh, next item, uh, village cleanup is April 24th. Meet in the park eight, eight, at 8:30 AM with masks and tools. Drug takeback day is also on April 24th. Uh, sorry about the misprint there. From 10 AM to 2 PM. At the police station, they will be accepting all prescription drugs expired, unused or unwanted prescription drugs. If anyone wants to voice off on either of those, village cleanup or drug takeback, please feel free.
I will be back in time and I'll be there.
Great.
Many hands make light work. So bring some friends.
Rob, can I add one more thing to the 24th?
Please.
We are gonna be having a farewell thank you parade for Father Tom. That afternoon, we'll be lining up, starting up by the skating rink and coming down through the village, picking him up around 5:30. Doing a swing around the village for people to wave goodbye, say thank you, and then stopping into Wood Park for a few speeches and some more farewells for Father Tom. So.
Thank you, Marie. And, and it's so funny because with all of the emails we had back and forth about that, I totally forgot to put that on the agenda. So since that just came up and that is also on the 24th and Marie laid that out. Um, we've talked about this. She just, uh, laid out the, the, the plan which would include the, the parade and then going back to the gazebo. Um, as a village board, I think, Andy, it would make sense for us to formally approve this, correct?
That'd be correct, Rob.
So I'm looking for a motion, uh, to approve the use of the gazebo and, and the parade for Father Tom for April 24th.
I'll make that motion, Rob.
Thank you. Bob, I need a second.
A second.
Thank you, Deb, for the discussion. All in favor, say aye and thumbs up.
All right.
Opposed? All right, great. Carrie's, thank you. Yeah, that's, that's gonna be a tough day. Gonna be a tough day. Another couple of quick announcements. We are doing hydrant flushing on May 17th for wards two and three. And May 18th for wards one and four. Uh, we will put that on, uh, Facebook as that time gets closer. We just want to make sure that, uh, we have a heads up out on that. And finally, um, an announcement, we were told the American Legion has canceled the Memorial Day Parade, unfortunately, again, due to COVID. We have received, um, a letter and trustees, I sent that as the document number five, I think. I don't know why I don't have it listed here as five.
They're still having their memorial services, but, um, they will be held at it earlier in the morning, but the public is welcome to attend those, but, uh, they're not doing any, um, big services in the park as well.
Okay. We did get a letter from the West Huzick Riders. I sent that out to you guys, uh, just a little bit before the meeting. Um, sad about the cancellation. Uh, they'd like to at least ride the parade route again this year on Memorial Day. Others have considered. Others have considered asking or joining, looking for input and looking for this as a possibility. They could ride or march the same routes, display flags. Trustees, Andy, what are your thoughts? And then Kevin in particular, Kevin, you're.
Well, I guess if the police were involved and would escort them around, I think you'd have to have some kind of, you know, some security. If people are driving, what going around the streets. I was going to ask the Legion about possibly having a smaller, as they go from site to site, doing their memorial services is maybe have a small parade in that respect, rather than having two different events going on at the same time that that day. But it's it's unfortunate because I know the American Legion was looking forward to having the parade this year. But we contacted three different bands and they all aren't playing yet this year. So they don't feel comfortable playing close together and blowing their horns in each other's faces. So that's one of the reasons why they really put the parade off.
I kind of would like to see some form of events with the Legion and maybe they could be the riders at the end. So I I don't want to close the book on absolutely nothing. I know we can't be like, I don't think we're in a good spot to as a village support a parade around. But I feel like there is some middle ground we could find.
Maybe instead of having the memorial service so early in the morning, what should I do at eight o'clock? Rather move it up to nine o'clock and maybe incorporate the two together.
Kevin, do you think it's worth you reaching out on behalf of the board to see what we can come up with? That's kind of the middle ground. Trustees, you guys comfortable with that?
Yep, I think so.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think so, but nine almost too early as well. I don't know if we have control of that, but I'd like to involve all us veterans in memorializing those.
Yeah, that's up to the Legion. That's their part of the the process, so I'll talk to them first.
All right, well, you have a huge thumbs up and thanks from us, Kevin, for doing that. I would like to see something happen on that day.
All right.
All right, thank you. At this point, I am looking for a motion to open our public hearing related to the town of 2021, 2022, Village of Housick Falls on budgets.
A motion.
Thank you, Bob. Need a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Bob. All right, so we will keep this open for at minimum a half hour. This is our our chance to talk through the budget, take questions from trustees, questions from anyone out there who has any questions or thoughts. Let's see here, let me see if I can get the budget documents shared here. Denise, are you on as well? Hey Chief, I think your your phone is picking up a whole bunch of sound on here. And Denise, I'm not hearing you if you are by chance on. See here. Do we have a Denise in here or no?
I don't see her on Rob.
Hmm, all right, well, while we wait, let me see if I can get the budget documents up here. All right, so these are these documents are available online. Um, I'm going to start off with the cover sheet. Do you guys see this?
Yeah.
All right, great. As soon as I figure out how to zoom in on the top there, okay. So this is how all the final numbers work out for the budget this year. The balance of the total taxable real estate property and the real estate tax levy per thousand. This is this would be the increase right here. So that if you if your house was $100,000, you would just simply multiply that and slap things over and that would be the tax increase. I think I have that right. All right. And it's a, I can't remember, I'm trying to find it. I have like four screens up here, so I'm sorry. The exact percent increase is a 1.0131 increase. That is the highest that you were allowed to go to stay under the air quotes 2% tax cap, which isn't really 2%, it's kind of 2%, but it's there are specific rules for each municipality that go into this. Now, I was, I'm sorry, Kevin, what's up?
I think Denise just checked in.
Denise, are you here? Denise, if you are here and get you speaking, that would be great. In the meantime, interrupt me whenever, oh, there you are. I see you, Denise. Denise, you are muted. Hello? Denise, can you hear us by chance? I hear Denise. Denise, your volume may not be enough. All right, while we are waiting for Denise to hear us and respond, these documents are online, they are broken down by the areas of general water and sewer. The way we have structured these in the past is we have the previous actuals, previous four years. We have, this was what we had budgeted this year, this column. This is the eight month actuals, which is what we have spent in those areas, or in this case, the income we've had. But as we go further, it's what we've spent for the first eight months of the fiscal year, which for village government runs from June 1 to May 31st of the previous year and how that would pan out for the projected. And this is what we have for a ton of budget. The first two pages of the general fund are the expected income that we have. And then we go through the various lines all the way through to find to finish out the general budget. We have the same for the water and sewer. If you are unfamiliar with a budget like I was when I had first started, I was familiar with budgets, but unfamiliar with this size and scope of budget. It definitely can be daunting, but you have a few different pages. Oh, you can't see the other one because I'm not showing the right screen, man. Sorry about that. I forget that when I switch tabs, it doesn't change over automatically with me. Do you guys see the general budget now?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so again, the the main points, the main couple of points are, number one, we're staying under the tax cap. It's a 1.0131 increase. And one of the things that sort of changed everything was the passage of the American Relief Plan and the fundings that would be coming back to municipalities. It took us a little while to figure out exactly what was going on and how it was going to happen. And it's going to basically come in two different payments. The payments are automatically sent to the towns. And if there's a village like us within the town, then the town will take the time to to send those funds to the village. We get one roughly in the near next couple of months. And then another one, I want to say around this time next year. Denise, is that your understanding as well?
Yes, like around, hopefully by the latest July and then July of next year.
Okay, and let me say a couple more things. Um, and 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 first off, in the past, we have been able to sit down with trustees, talk through things, explain things, and that was something that we did not have time for. And that is something that I wish it had happened. I'm sorry, it didn't happen. In no way do we have to pass this tonight, but we do have to have a budget passed by the end of the month, which would be the end of next week. So this is a time where we can ask questions and we can talk through things. We can make changes, we can propose changes and make changes. Now, we could also do that at a special meeting if that is what was desired. In terms of the COVID relief fund from the American Rescue Plan, we are expecting around $183,000, a little bit, I think, 183,500 for the village this, what do you say again, July, was it Denise?
Yes.
And then the same amount around July of next year. And we sort of had three principles in mind when we were thinking through this budget. Obviously, we're we're trying to keep taxes down, but we have a lot of expenses and that's just normal, normal life. The second thing was trying to figure out how to use the American, the relief funds in such a way that sets us up. Or the third big overall principle is the fact that we we do have a lot of debt. You know, as a village, we've had a lot of things going on over the past six to eight years. We have had a lot of infrastructure upgrades and projects that have been extremely necessary and extremely important, essential to the village. But those do come with costs and we do have bonds for those. We had debt from the flood, which was in my first like month of being mayor four years ago. Um, and what we thought to do, and this was the idea we wanted to bring to the board, was to use a lot of these COVID relief funds for some of the bigger equipments, items that we need in police and water and sewer. Use those in a way that's that's responsible. It's equipment that we just, not just that we could use, but it's equipment that if we have, we won't need to spend to bring those services in. And it's equipment that can be shared and used amongst a lot of the different departments. And at the same time, if we do this now, ideally in the next, over the next few years, it would free us up for having to do large equipment purchases and may allow us to allocate some more funds into some of our debt. And the reason that was really heavy on it on me this time is because I feel like Denise, was it this water bill that came out that had a new, a new extra bond on it?
No, it'll be next year.
It'll it'll be next year that we have that. So I know it's, I know it's coming. And I thought that if we could use these funds in a responsible way to set us up to start being able to take care of some of the debt, we're in a good shape. Denise, is there anything in particular you wanted to share or summarize about the budget? And then we can sort of turn it over to trustees for for whatever questions, comments they have.
If anybody has any questions, you know, for sure, ask. I'm having a hard time getting this, my slide to cooperate with the with your.
Do you, are you trying to share your screen or are you trying to move what's on the screen right now?
No, I'm just trying to see what's on the screen and I have.
Oh, you'll have to tell me where to move.
So that's okay. The water, you know, the reason that we had decided to set that, those funds aside for the water equipment that is really needed is because there's a lot of equipment that you use, that's needed for the water fund. And we really can't afford to pass that water increase onto the residents. So anything that we can use from that American Relief is well, welcome. But I'm here to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Denise?
Yeah.
Are are we allowed, are there are there specific guidelines for how that relief fund can be used?
There are.
Andy, do you want to speak to those?
And you jacked in every. Hmm?
I'm sorry, Deb, did you want Andy to speak to what those guidelines are or did you have?
No, I just want to make sure that we're in whatever the guidelines are. I mean, he doesn't have to explain it. If you say they are, they are.
I will defer to Andy because, you know, they're pretty, the last set of guidelines that I saw were pretty basic, but it was definitely for infrastructure, which we definitely need.
So some of the, I'm sorry, Kevin, do you have a question?
So I can. We talk about infrastructure, but there's no money in there for sidewalks, which we talked about earlier this month. Or downtown, a lot of the sidewalks were all crumbling and breaking and their ADA warning tracks, which we're putting off till maybe next year. But some of that kind of thing is is really needs to be done soon before somebody trips and has an accident. And I'd rather not see us just chuck blacktop on our sidewalks that would just happen in the past and have those properly fixed. And that's something we're going to have to pay for eventually if it must be get a grant.
So I'll speak to that real fast. I know that some of the sidewalk replacements are done through CHIPS funds. What's that?
Where are you?
Sorry, I couldn't hear who that was anyway. Um, so we we have some sidewalk work already planned. I know that Neil has already eyed some work on Main Street that has to be done. And he's going to use CHIPS funds for that and he's waiting for quotes back from the contractor. And I know that there was that one situation up on Stone Street where they used the the blacktop quickly before they did a better fix of it. But, um, yeah, the previous sidewalks are tough. I know that residentially, we can do a 50 50 split between the village and the homeowner anytime. But there are some sidewalks and I know Neil has someone, he's eye on Main Street. Neil, I don't know if you're on to say anything else on this.
Well, the problem is, especially on Main Street, where the almost the whole community uses Main Street and Church Street for walking. I don't think those streets should be on the homeowners to to repair. In a lot of cases, they haven't been repaired probably since the 1950s or 40s. And it makes it difficult for people to walk around town.
Okay. I'll make note of that. Concern? I'm just reaching out to Neil to see if he's on right now. He may be watching live and he can text me.
I talked to him earlier and he said he was going to be on Facebook, but I don't think he was going to be on, Rob.
Yeah, I mean, you know, California family, I got it. He's on vacation.
Right. Denise, I have just a question. If you could just tell the the rate of 1.013 per increase, what's that equate to in per thousand per se, you know, and so people can understand how it will affect them.
Well, I am having a hard time getting my spreadsheets up here.
I got it, Denise.
Okay, so it's about an additional 18,000 over the 1.8 million. It 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 equates to about $10 for anyone with $100,000 assessed value.
I have $10.15. Does that sound right?
I lost you there, but.
She said for a property of $100,000.
You said.
$10.15. Is that right, Denise?
Yes, thereabouts.
Okay, okay, that, that's, I just wanted to.
Yeah, we figured it out, $100,000 house and it's right about there, Bobby. I cannot access my Excel spreadsheet for some reason and I don't know why.
Denise, I'll email you the one I'm looking at right now, so you can.
All right, thanks. Okay, great. Yeah, it's minimal. I mean, the state allows you to stay under that cap. So you you really need to go to that cap. We and we actually had a rollover last year of a little bit because there was no tax increase last year. The mayor chose not to. So I mean, there comes a point when you really need to take advantage of that. And for $100,000 house, a $10 increase really is not substantial, but it is, you know.
Oh, not at all. No, no.
So that's, you know, that was what we figured out would be this year.
Denise, we should have the spreadsheet there in a minute.
Hey.
No, that's fine. That answers my question, Denise.
Thank you. Good, thanks.
I do want to speak briefly to some of the bigger purchases that I alluded to earlier. Um, we are in need of a new police vehicle. So we have, I think, 45,000 set aside for new police vehicle. Our fleet is getting older. I know we have, I think we have at least one that's not working right now. Um, Neil put in a request for a plow, sander and chassis, right, Denise?
Yes.
Um, requests and that, I I want to say, what was the final total on that one?
I'm just getting able to access my spreadsheet now, so.
I'm looking at all there.
Neil told me, I think it was around 180,000, Rob.
Yeah, thereabouts.
168, does that sound right?
No, one eight, he told me. No, one eight, he told me one eighties. What, that's what he told me this afternoon.
Now, Rob, is there a written proposal for him, um, from him saying why and all this? I mean, I knew, so I would just like to see what the reasons are.
No, that's a great question. Each, uh, as the budget process starts, each of the department heads. Um, will send requests, uh, to Denise and I explaining sort of what they need, what they're looking for. Um, what are the regular expenditures? What are, and, and they work with Denise to double check on things like energy costs and so, and so on and so forth. Uh, they put the request in, yeah, sorry Denise, you can keep going.
So it's seventy thousand dollars, um, for the plow and the sander. And then the chassis for the same truck, which they sell separately, is estimated at ninety-eight, six, twenty-one. So a total of one sixty-eight, six. You know, he calls around, gets prices, of course, that has to go out to bed for state contract. But that is for the total cost of one truck is about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Did he write, uh, is there a proposal telling us why? I'm sure we do. I just want to know. How would we know? Is there, does he write something up? That can give metrics or something to show that we need it and, and he may be, he might, he probably does, but how can I know, you know, just coming in?
Right.
Formal in the past, not to say that we shouldn't be or couldn't do, do that. I'm trying to remember.
He does put it in his budget.
I think that's, that should be essential. I mean, you gotta have reasons.
It's, it's in his budget, but, and he also, just so you know, but we haven't bought a new truck since two thousand and eight.
Right. And he does put that in his budget request. And it's broken down and then of course, you know, that would be, but what Bobby is saying is absolutely correct. That we don't buy a lot of equipment. Um, and then Neil does make, um, a lot of side notes to his budget request. And that is noted, which you don't see here on this spreadsheet, but if you want to give a call, any of that stuff is always available to you guys.
Yeah, and, and I, and I will, and I know you're asking for the absolute right reasons and I'm glad that we have. You and your mind and your interest here to, uh, to focus on that. Um, just so you know, the, the experience I've always had with Neil over the past, uh, few years is he, um, is always looking for ways. To save costs for the village, um, and, and move things around and prioritize long-term. And the, the new highway garage was a grant that really wasn't supposed to cost the village much and through a lot of, um, various issues and frustrations. Uh, he was able to, um, offset some of his own normal expenses to put that, uh, those extra costs into his budget. So that, you know, the normal taxpayer and us in the budget wouldn't see a big change.
Right, he purchased no, he purchased no equipment this year to forego, you know, paying for the rest of the highway garage.
Okay, for the record, I'm not questioning, I, I just kinda wanna know how we go about things.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, almost like you gotta show us something. I'm sure he needs it. I just, I was wondering if there was already reasons laid out. But now you said, I mean, two thousand and eight. That's been a while, thirteen years, uh, but I was just looking for reasons.
And don't feel, don't feel the need to justify yourself Bobby. That's why you're there and that's what you need to do. So it's all good.
I feel you Bob, cause I'm, I've never been through the, the budget process yet either, so. So I'm feel, uh, yeah, and numbers are really hard for me.
And if I'm looking at it correctly. Go ahead Bobby.
I think, you know, this was probably all done over the year and I mean, this being my first meeting. I don't want to just jump in and ask questions that you've probably had answered all year, but that's kinda be what I'm gonna be doing. Um, just, you know, it obviously was probably answered to you guys during the whole year as to why. I just had to ask.
And to be honest with you, the budget hearing is the only time of the year when these kind of questions come up. And that's when they kind of earmark what we're gonna spend to by big item, uh, you know, big, big items. So, yeah, it's not always answered throughout the year, so always feel free to ask questions.
I, that's why I think in the future, a, a budget workshop would be really helpful for us.
Absolutely Kevin, I don't disagree and I am, um, I am game to try to make something like that happen in the next week. If you guys want to take that time to set up a couple, um, times. During the workday, if we can find a time where we all, all works or over the weekend. Um, and we could formally put off acceptance until you guys have been able to, um, ask those deeper questions to get a deeper understanding. And that's, I'm totally fine with that, um, especially because we have new trustees and they're kinda like blindly going, okay. This is a budget, so I, if you guys want to do that, that's totally fine with me.
It's just simple stuff like with the loss of the vehicle, does that mean more overtime or have we put in way more money? Into something that's just gonna continue to break down? So, those are where I'm at. So a budget workshop would be very important for me.
I agree, especially, yeah, cause that's, I have questions, but they're not, they're just, cause I don't get it necessarily. Don't understand.
And I think adding in the, uh, the COVID relief money kinda complicates things too that, uh, we're not really up to speed on.
Yeah. Um, would you guys wanna look at maybe something like Thursday of next week, the twenty-ninth, set it as a special meeting? Uh, to further discuss the budget and then, uh, with, with the idea of, of, of needing to formally approve it, sort of at the end of that to make the end of the month deadline?
Yes.
Works for me.
Yeah, works for me.
Yes, please. Works for me.
Craig?
Yep, I think we should maybe try to get, narrow it down to five or six topics and, and. That'd probably be enough for us to try to get through.
And I mean, and in, in the meantime, I mean, I'm available via email, cell phone. If you guys wanna kinda work through your own questions to get to the point where you wanna go to the meeting.
I, 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 I do think that would make the meeting a lot more productive. As everyone waiting until the meeting.
Yeah, I think that should happen.
You know, like we, we had, um, a request, you know, we had several requests for funds from organizations throughout the village. You know, I, it, it, budget wise, it's probably not a big chunk of the money. But, but we should at least, we wanted, we said we would make a concerted effort to do that. That should be one of the things we look through. Um, the, the, and all these other topics, but, you know, if ahead of time we have five or six topics. And everybody can at least look through the budget and get it figured out and get the numbers that are there straight in your head and what, what they represent. Then that we could have a pretty productive meeting, I think.
Agreed. I think you're right, um, and again. Thank you guys for your, um, flexibility with this meeting, uh, wanting to do another meeting so we have more time to discuss that. It's, it's awesome.
Well, Denise, can we come in and see you in the office? Can I come in and sit down, talk with you or?
Yes.
Phone call, you're available.
Yeah, I have a few things going on. I have a few things going on right now, but, um, I will be glad to give you my cell phone to make sure that I'm there. Um, and if I'm not, I mean, I can make, you know, accommodations to meet with you and discuss anything that, you know, you wanna discuss, so. Yeah, we'll make it work.
I know we had, um, Mary Ann on still trustees. Is there anything you wanted to talk to Mary Ann about in terms of the proposals and the questions she had on behalf of Huzick Rising?
Does she have, Mary Ann, do you have prices for these things? Have we looked that far into your kiosk and, and things like that?
Yes, I should, you should have received it as a package to your Huzick Falls trustees email. There was a cover letter and then attached were all of the estimates from who, how much it was. Some of them have variances because, um, uh, we aren't sure of things like installation costs. Um, you know, who's, who's gonna actually put it in the ground, cause you might see me with a post hole digger out on Route seven. As the solution to a problem. But, um.
Mary Ann, I don't, I don't think we got an attachment. Marie, did you get an attachment?
I know, I, I definitely got one.
I did.
The attachment that I saw was, um, from someone in Bennington. Yep, it was a whole package. Um, you have to go through it. It was, I scanned it and attached it is one solid group. Of, uh, of, uh, attachments.
Was that from your email address, Mary Ann, or someone else sent that?
I sent it from Huzick Rising to all of, all of the trustees at, at one time.
Right, it was ten pages.
Yep, it was ten pages.
Yeah.
All right, I will look for that. Thank you.
I can resend it to everybody too, just so you have it in the current email.
Yeah, that'd be great. Um, did you by chance talk to the town about, uh, any extra support on these endeavors?
Um, we are, we have actually, um, the town has helped us, uh, get permission to, for the locate. Locations of the signs. Um, we have not asked them for funding of these signs as yet. Because they are directing people to the village. Um, so I'm not, you know. I just thought they were more in the villages camp than in the towns camp, although they are the ones who did give us permission.
Okay, all right.
Interject. I mean, I think that if the village does well with village economic development, I mean, I think the town does well as well. Um, it might not hurt to kinda split the difference between the town and the village. I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but the town or the village has a lot of infrastructure needs right now. That.
No, just understatement.
Maybe a little bit of help from the towns, um, you know, relief could help as well.
Right, well, we split off things that were specifically town, um, associated. Even though, for, for instance, like the battlefield, um, which will be something we are, are asking the town for help with. And, you know, a battle reenactment will bring thousands of people to town, um, and the village. So, I, I think, I, I do understand what you're saying, um, but that also works the other, other way around. Did the, if the town sinks money into the battle reenactment, then it also brings money to the village.
Right, I just think that both hands should wash each other and the more we can help each other, the better off we'll both be. Because this is probably the only, um, you know, a very slim open window that we'll ever get money from the feds, so. Then the better way we can do it, you know, everybody will be happier, so.
And, and just one thing to mention, uh, since we're talking about that, I know we had the request earlier in the year for, um, the village to put, to budget some money for. Huzick Rising on a regular basis. We did include that. It's in, uh, the general fund. Uh, expenses paid six and we put in, we budget seven hundred and fifty dollars as sort of an annual support, uh, for Huzick Rising.
I, I appreciate that. I think you voted on it last July and, um, and last July, we didn't receive any funds.
Oh.
Yes.
That we can check on. So thank you for bringing that up. Marie, can you make note to check on that?
Yeah, the other thing, if I can, um, cause I'm also, I have a few hats, so I also have a Huzick Rising hat. Um, and Huzick Rising has, um, done with the fundraising that we can. It's not like we're just coming. And asking the board for money and not trying to get it in other ways. But like everybody else, we are, you know, we've been slowed down by COVID. You know, fundraising is harder with COVID and, but we're, we are doing what we can to raise our own funds and to look, look at other sources of funds. And grants and things like that. So it's not like we're just trying to get money from the village and take the easy way out.
No, I understand.
Yeah, and I, just to, just to elaborate a, a little bit, um, and get a little bit more specific, uh, as to what Deb just said. Um, we work hard on getting funding all year long. For instance, we are putting large planters on the Walter A. Wood Bridge, um, going clear across, uh, the river. Um, there are eighteen planters which cost us about a hundred and eighty dollars apiece, which we fundraised for. And we were able to get, we also fundraised for all the flowers going in those planters, the soil, the people who are gonna do that. We are replanting all of the dead trees on John Street and, uh, across from the, um. The liquor store and that was with a donation, um, Dave Sutton is donating his time to plant all those trees. Um, we are doing a huge, huge. Projects this year, which we are doing on our own, um, to help. The downtown area in specific, so, um. We do work hard to get money elsewhere.
And I will say that we do realize that and what, what I was saying about asking the town for money to kinda split the difference. Had nothing to reflect on what you've done because you've done great work. Um, but the more we can split it, the more funds we may be able to recoup is what I was driving at.
Yep.
Andy, can you speak quickly to, um, if American Rescue Plans, uh, funding can go towards, uh, something like Huzick Rising?
Yeah, my answer right now, Rob, is that's something that I'll need to research. I don't know the answer to that right now.
And I think it would early.
Yeah, early stages and I agree with Denise. But I need to.
They wanna pay for the sign directly, that's fine.
Oh, just, just a suggestion, if Huzick Rising didn't get what we, the funds we budgeted last year, there's money available. And if it, we're still budgeting the same amount of money to give to them next year and we actually do. That would fund some of these projects that they're talking about.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe we've already done our job and we just didn't follow through and do what we said we were gonna do. And I think there's a line in the budget for next year for Huzick Rising already. I'm not sure about that. That, I, that's one of the things we wanted to compare. I, I was gonna switch topics just a little bit and ask about the rescue squad. Did we include something in there? We had Bruce come to us and talk about the financial challenges that the rescue squad is having. They, uh, they also have been impacted by the demands put upon them by COVID. Um, but I'm not saying it should come from there. I think we should support them regardless.
Craig, we did for the rescue squad. It's paid six, seventy-three, twenty dot four. And we put in the same we put in for Huzick Rising, which was seven hundred and fifty. Do I have that right Denise?
I'm just looking, seven hundred and fifty dollars, yes, okay.
Did we, did we find out, um, which fund the town paid the fifteen thousand to the rescue squad from? Mark, you, can you answer that?
Uh, Kevin, I, I can't tie off top of my head. I can, I can look into it and find out for sure. My instincts is most of those types of things have, they're mandated to come out of A fund. Which is, uh, both village and town pays into the A fund. So in essence, what you're driving at is that it becomes, you know, in a way, a kind of a double taxation to village residents. That we should, we should take into account and, and always consider, I think, when, uh, something like this comes up. Because if it's, you know, we, we did, uh, there's fifteen thousand dollars of the town budget from the A fund. Which is, uh, village and town, I believe, went to the rescue squad. So, you know, that's, that's, the village taxpayers are already paying in that fund.
Thanks, that's one of the questions I think we asked a couple meetings ago, so I just wanted to find that out.
Mary Ann, I have one, one more question. If we had to prioritize out of these ten pages. What is the most critical, could you categorize the most critical items for us? So that when we do discuss this on Thursday night, um, we'll, we'll be prepared. I would assume this is gonna be one of the items we wanna talk about.
Yeah, I probably should go back to the board and, and regroup and, and come up with some kind of, uh, priority list. I think, um, when we were thinking about things, the main concern was how do we help the most people? Um, so we'll probably sit down and say, okay, what, which of these projects would help the most people? Uh, and, and look at it that way.
And on top of that.
Get something to you.
Okay, and on top of that, we will also, um, see what we haven't sent to you and get that sent to you. Uh, so that you can use, um, that to plan accordingly to whatever you would spend and that may shift your priorities. uh so that you can use um that to plan accordingly to whatever you would spend and that may shift your priorities.
Okay, great, thank you.
And Kevin, uh, I can confirm that I have a budget right here, so I just looked at it quick and uh that wasn't a fund deal, so it was fifteen thousand dollars out of the A fund to the rescue squad.
All right, thank you.
So that means, Mark, that the village residents are paying half of that, correct?
Correct. Yeah, A fund stuff is distributed throughout, it's townwide, so.
Right, townwide, group in town inside versus outside the village, I got you.
Yep.
Thank you.
You know, that's saying, that that holds true, guys, too, for, you know, like parade stuff, uh, anything that comes out, you know, um. I I wanna say, yeah, parades, uh, the St. Patrick's Day parade, the, all that, all that stuff, so it's, it's holds true for the same for all those.
Thank you, Mark. So I know we've had a lot of questions, I do um want to make sure this is a public hearing and if there's anyone out in the public um who wants to speak, ask questions about the budget, and I'll actually start with the first one I saw from, I think it was Doug. Uh, let me see here, let me find in my texts. Um, Denise, the question came up, uh, how come the twenty-one twenty-two budget is projecting ten thousand dollars less in sales tax revenue when it has gone up every year? And this coming year should be recovery much better. Uh, what are your thoughts? Denise, are you on?
Denise, you're on mute.
Okay, there I am.
Yeah.
Um, I talked to Ransar County and yeah, we are doing really good right now. Um, probably all of this stuff is not gonna hit for another year or two, but we find it's better and, you know, ten thousand dollars really in the grand scheme of things is not huge in the general fund budget. So it's better to be a little bit conservative, in my view. Um, you know, that's, that's a good question and that can be changed.
And uh, Doug is, I'm sorry, Doug, are you on?
Yeah, yeah.
Go for it, please.
Since we're talking about who's a rising and economic, economic development and bringing revenue in, spending money and investing money brings money in and sales tax is one of those areas, and I don't see why we would be conservative for the following year when we've made a hundred and ninety thousand dollars this year. So to me, that ten thousand dollars could be raised to ten, fifteen thousand and that money could go to who's a rising, who's contributing?
He was trying to get seats.
Marion, I think you're, uh, Marion, could you mute for one minute?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'll be, uh, yeah, Doug, we, I, we got your question and it's, it's a good point, what we typically have done in, in, uh, in trying to anticipate uh incomes is we typically average previous years together. And I think that what we did for this one, Denise, we probably averaged the previous four.
Right, I'm trying to look here. I will let you know.
Because the previous four, and you know, you're right, Doug, to, to say it, it it has been an upward trend, so you would could think hopefully hypothetically that it would sort of continue. Um, but it's a fair point to know that we have aimed a little bit lower than we're likely going to get.
We all know the bottom is gonna fall out of this at some point and we just don't want to be on the short side of it, that's all. I'm trying to find where we did.
Uh, i- if it averages out, if Rob's correct, if you add the la- previous four years and divide by forty equals one eighty.
That's the formula, formula we used.
Okay, yep.
Yeah.
Um, Marion, uh, you had a question as well, I know you did the little hand raise thing, so did you want to unmute and uh and ask your, say your thoughts?
Yes, Marion Stevens Wyler Avenue, is there anything in the budget on emergency cleanups from storms and things? We've been really hit very hard with them, I think, this year and especially with trees, branches and everything. I mean, uh, we ended up uh buying a chipper to take care of our stuff and luckily had wonderful neighbors that came and helped us clean up wood and things. But this is a common issue, uh, we can't get rid of brush, it's hard for senior citizens or even people that don't have trucks to have to transport bushes, bum, uh, you know, trees and things that come down from um storms to uh the waterworks and or to the um landfill. And I know I have complained about this issue for years, but I really think there needs to be something in the budget because again, we were hit again very bad this year and luckily I had wonderful neighbors that helped us and we invested it in wood chipper to make our own mulch out of all the trees and branches that came in our backyard. But I don't feel everybody can do this.
Yeah, Marion, that's a fair point and always, you know, as, as on the village side of this, the question always is if we offer this, who do we offer to, who do we not offer to, how much does it cost and and balancing? That whole situation is always where the reluctance is as a municipality to, to do that, um, and that's, I think that's kind of just always been the issue uh from the municipal uh standpoint on something like that, it's a great idea, I would love to see uh some volunteer organizations or or churches locally um be able to offer that, but it's, it's, it's a hard decision um to do that.
That's why I'm saying, could there be something, an emergency fund for this? Uh, because like I said, I don't think our residents should, we pay taxes, I think, again, other villages even take brush away uh for their people and we're still sitting here with, yes, um, I want to say the village did a wonderful job cleaning uh sweeping the gutters and things uh this past uh this year, uh, but I think, like I said, and it's great to get the leaves picked up, but there's other things, um, like a new year begins, yes, we cleaned up before winter, but every winter we have some damage and that simple thing about brush, again, we can't um always bring them to the places you guys want them brought and I just think it should be something that's in the budget for a general cleanup um for that. And I mean, I.
And that would, something would be. Yeah, and 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 I know in the, in the past, uh, we did, uh, when we had the the really violent storm and flood, I feel like we did offer something like that, or I think maybe we just had the transfer stations open longer, but from the village point of view, it's do we have the personnel, do we have the equipment to do that and all of our own stuff?
Well, you have sometimes personnel, it would put flags up in the village, put out Christmas trees, et cetera, et cetera. I think, like I said, in an emergency, we've got, that problem's gotta be solved.
Well, unfortunately, that problem is not as simple as just uh fixing it, we have to pave those people and we don't have the manpower. We only have four guys on the highway department.
Budget for it. Well, this is why we said, could it be in the budget, an emergency fund for these storms and things?
I will tell you that one of the things I have wanted to do was try to get more employees back on the DPW and just financially speaking, the reality of it is we, we, we do not have the ability to do that, provide the services we do uh and and also continue to improve infrastructure and take care of uh the upgrades that need to happen, it's something I would like to be able to do. Um, and Neil and I have had conversations about that, he, he remembers back when the DPW was twice as what it, what it is now. That's an ideal situation to be at, but the reality of working there financially, it's not something that's available in our near future. My thoughts.
Well, you're hearing my thoughts again, for what good they do, because, like I said, we wanna, um, it's wonderful what who's a rising is doing with getting the downtown cleaned up, but you know, we need help beyond the downtown. And um I'm getting older, I'm not getting younger, unfortunately, and I, and a lot of our population is getting older and it's very hard for them to keep up with things when we don't have something as simple as brush cleanup or our emergency pickup when storms and things.
Got it. And you keep, you keep bringing it up.
I have for years here, Rob, you know that.
Absolutely.
We also don't have the uh volun- not the volunteers, the criminals, whatever they are, what are they called?
Community service?
Yeah, those guys.
Yeah, but you know what, even when you had the community service, they didn't do, they didn't come up outside the village, it was taking care.
Yeah, they're limited what they can, what they can do, yeah.
Again, they were limited also, so I mean, um, I just think when we're trying to make this village, you have it growing, you have positive bill, businesses coming in, you're having houses sell, and I just think it's, um, we need to make the whole village look good instead of just the downtown.
All right, thank you, Marion. Uh, and also Harold in the background there. Um, other questions, thoughts from anyone out there? Just introduce yourself uh before you uh offer your thoughts and questions.
I know.
Rob, have you seen the questions that are coming up in Messenger?
Yeah, um. Uh, Megan brought that the sheriff's office offers alternative to incarceration work program available. That's good.
Yeah, they're down, they're down right now, too, because of covid, they're uh they have a limited number of people out working right now.
Yeah, and we're discussing that later, um, the use of community service. I don't think I've missed any questions, but I'm just gonna double check through here. And again, anyone else can uh speak up?
Rob, it's Jane Stokes at Civicure.
I did.
Hi, um. It, uh, two things, if if I could. Um, one, uh, that Civicure is planning its um third who's a blooms garden tour fundraiser this summer on July tenth and eleventh.
Okay.
And um hopefully we'll get that on the village calendar soon, but I just wanted to let people know. Uh, it's gonna be twice as big this year, we're gonna do it for two days and there are nine gardens on the tour. So um should be, should be really nice and we're really hoping for all those people who are feeling cooped up to get outside and have a, have a really good time. Um, people have really, really enjoyed this in the past. Uh, and and the second thing is, um, you and I have been chatting a little bit just back and forth um in the chat boxes tonight. Um, I just would like to put it out there that um Civicure as a nonprofit in the community um has faced a similar issues to who's a rising, which is that it's been, it's been tough to fundraise in a year like this, we couldn't do a garden tour um during covid, um, you know, during the worst of it because nobody knew how it spread. Um, now we know being outdoors is a pretty good thing, so we're on firmer ground. Um, but uh I, speaking on behalf of of the Board of Civicure, we, we would be interested in um uh becoming part of the discussion, um, if the town is um going to make some funds available to nonprofits from the uh rescue plan funding. Um, we spent a great deal of money putting a brand new roof on the wood block this past year um to the point where we're, we're substantially in debt. And um any, any funding that um would help us out is, is, you know, gonna help us in the short term and help the community in the long term, so um I will uh put that in writing and Civicure will do something a little bit more um formal for the um continuation of the uh trustees' budget meeting on Thursday, if that's, um, if that's allowed.
I'm, I'm okay with that, trustees, would you welcome that?
Oh.
Sure.
Uh, ideally get something us a little bit earlier, at least to sort of what you're thinking of on your radar, so as we're discussing things uh amongst the trustees and with who's surprising, we can sort of have a, that on the radar in the ballpark.
Okay, sounds good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Uh, anyone else like to speak up uh in this public hearing we have for the tentative budget? Not hearing anybody interrupt if uh if you have something. Uh, in the meantime, Andy, my two questions for you are, one, should we close the public hearing or leave it open with the possibility of the special meeting or the likelihood of a special meeting next week, and then second, you would want us to make the uh motion to um for the sex, for a special meeting on next Thursday, correct, Andy?
That's correct, the first question is, no, you, the the extent to which you can keep the public hearing open on the tentative budget ends today under law, so uh you will have to close the public hearing tonight, keep it open for an adequate time to receive all public comments. And secondly, you will need a motion for a special meeting next Thursday and then I'll prepare the special meeting notice.
Okay, and we can, we can state here like we typically do in meetings, if even if it's a special meeting, we can still have people who may want to share or ask further questions, that's always welcome.
Uh, that's within your discretion, you, you set your special meeting agenda, in the ordinary course, you do have a people to be heard section, so that's within your discretion.
Okay. Trustees, any other questions on the budget? General public, any other questions? Okay, hearing none, um, I would be willing to entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Oh, oh, hold on a minute, I'm sorry, I have two participants that have raised hands. Uh, I don't even know if I can find the raised hand setting here. Um, Madeline's iPad, did you have something you wanted to uh share? I know I heard from Marion.
Hi, Rob.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so I'm Maddie Hadden. How are you, Robs?
Good.
Good, um, this is my first Zoom with everybody and I'm really enjoying it. And I also appreciate you looking into the uh playground down by your way over there.
Yep.
Um, so I called Tony Rice last week um about the right of way behind Classic Street. There are about five homes at a butt this right of way. And the right of way comes out at the end of Abbott Street. Um, Tony said that it would, might be a good idea to bring it up at a village meeting to find out more information about it. And he also mentioned at one point, this this road might have been owned by the village at one time, that there are other roads in the village. For instance, I guess it's Harder Lane, that is a right of way. So, um, throughout the years, we've lived here over thirty years and um purchased the house, Ralph Sternberg was our attorney and we questioned about the right of way and he looked into it and he mentioned it was called then a traveled way, that everybody who lived and abutted this so-called road, whatever, would have access to it. So over the years, especially the last couple of years with all the storms and whatnot, there are um down branches and limbs also making it really dangerous, you can't get to Abbott Street uh because there's large vegetation that has grown up. And I wonder if um the village might be able to find out who actually owns this road to be able to help us clean it, clear it, because right now it's a pretty much of a hazard and it's dangerous, we noticed that there are a few new families that just moved in. Um, one that happens to a butt this right of way with young children and of course, curious children going into the back and whatnot.
So I'm gonna bring up Google Maps, I'm wondering if you can explain to me where exactly you are talking about.
So the right of way, according to um what Tony Rice had mentioned, is anywhere between twenty to twenty-three to possibly twenty-five feet wide.
Is it on Classic or Abbott?
Um, it's, it's behind Classic and it comes out at the end of Abbott. I believe this road also could have connected to the Ball Street Seminary when it was up and running.
Do you guys see the map right now?
Yeah.
So. This is, it's right in back of Dr. Babinski's dental office where it used to be anyway. It goes, it's on the bet between Wild.
It goes, it's on the bet between Wilder Avenue and Classic Street. There's an old pack, there's an old road that is, I remember when I was a kid.
Well, there's, there's property, there's a large parcel back there that, um, Dr. Bobinski does own. But between his large parcel, it kind of makes an L shape to his, his house, his house, uh, property in the back goes back and then to the left. And then there's this so-called road which apparently is not owned by him, that used to be owned by the town, that is pretty much impassable right now.
Okay, so Andy, I know we've, we've had.
Does that go back behind my house?
Where are you?
I'm at 45 Abbott, in the Fleming House.
No, no, Deb.
I'm confused.
No, it's, it's before, if you can see what the, the Vertard Avenue, no, it's, it's it's probably in the middle of Abbott Street, uh, from the Classic Street side towards Wilder Avenue.
Okay.
Maddie, is that correct?
Is that right, Doug?
Yeah, it's like in Doug's vicinity, right? Behind Doug's house as well.
Is this where my mouse is? That's where you're looking?
Can't really make that out very clearly.
Let me zoom in a little bit here. Classic, Abbott.
Andy, if this is a village right of way, could it be transferred to the property owners?
It's, Doug said it's right behind, uh, 99 Classic. So that's right, where the parking lot where you were pointing, Rob.
Okay.
Where the, where you live right now, yes. Like more like where the parked car is.
Right here.
Then McGovern's home, their old home. And then it goes out to the apartment. So that apartment structure, house at the corner, has a parking lot there where this so-called road would travel out right on top of.
Hey, Andy, can you talk briefly about, I know we have looked in the past, um, for other right of ways and sort of how that process works? Can you just briefly explain that?
Uh, I can. I'll be brief. So a couple of the questions that a village or any municipality always faces is, is this a street? Is it owned by the municipality? Do they have fee title ownership for highway purposes? Or is it simply still private property but has been used for the requisite period of time as a public roadway and becomes what's called a user road? Both of those are types of public highways. And Kevin, your, uh, question was if the village owns property, can it transfer it to private, uh, owners? Yeah, it can, but there are different rules associated with roadways and the abandonment of roadways that you'd have to take a look at. But the first question I would have here is, was this ever a public roadway? Or was it simply a private right of way? And, and that's a title issue and that always requires a title search and there's expense associated with that for the village. If the village wanted to move forward and first explore that issue. But the, the initial issue is gonna be, who owns the property? What does a title search show in terms of whether it's a private right of way? They'd have to take a look at deeds associated with that property to see if there's any right of way language within any of the adjoining deeds. And then the village would need to research as to whether this was used as a public highway and does it still retain its characteristic as a public highway? So these issues are not easy to deal with. They do come up from time to time. It takes a fair amount of, uh, title search and investigation work to determine what legal rights are at issue and what the options for the municipality might be, as well as the adjoining private property owners.
Maddie, I think the best first step in this is to get a village employee, maybe like Neil as the GPW superintendent. And just show him specifically what you're talking about on, on site so that he can relay it back to myself and, and to Andy, and then we can sort of make our decision on, on what will be the next step.
Okay, that, that's fair.
So I would just reach out to the village office or reach out to Neil, um, directly at the DPW office. He is on vacation. He should be back, I think in like a week or week and a half.
No, maybe, maybe back May 3rd.
May 3rd, two weeks. Is that two weeks? Two weeks? Um, but you may be able to get in touch with, um, Bruce, who's the Deputy Superintendent, um, and talk to him about it.
Bruce, okay.
He's gonna kill you.
Probably, but that's all right. Someone else. Doug, did you have something else you wanted to share? I know you hit the hen race thing. Doug, you are still muted. So if you're trying to say anything, uh.
No, I was just supporting what Maddie was talking about, but this is the budget hearing, correct?
Yeah, we're still in the budget hearing. If you have a question about that too.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Um, unless there's anyone else who has a question, I would entertain, uh, a motion to close the public hearing. I heard Kevin first, so I'm gonna give it up to Kevin. Craig, you want a second? Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing regarding the 21, 22 tentative village budgets?
Hi.
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 Opposed? All right, carries. And I think we discussed the possibility of next Thursday, the 29th as a follow-up meeting to sort of parse out what we discovered in the past, uh, in the, in the coming week. Andy, does that schedule meeting work for you at 6:00 PM?
It does, Rob.
All right, then I would, uh, like to entertain a motion to, um, have a special meeting on the 29th, via Zoom to discuss, uh, budget issues and any other business that the village board would bring forward.
Motion.
Thank you, Emily.
Second.
Thank you, Deb. Any further discussion on that? Andy, did I do that all right?
Yes, you did.
Yes. All right. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Posed, sanctions? I think that was everybody. All right. That carries. Uh, thank you. Um, uh, Denise has already signed off. Uh, I will pass on her thanks. I do wanna thank Denise. Um, a ton for all the work she did. Uh, as, as, as well as anyone else of all the process and trustees. Again, thank you, uh, for your patience with this process. And forget offering more time, um, to, to meeting to, to do this right. Um, it's a, it's a, I think a strong showing of, uh, how dedicated you guys are to, uh, to this village and to doing the right thing. So thank you. All right, I'm gonna stop, uh, sharing the street view because that is just all sorts of creepy. And we're gonna go on to quick mayor updates. All right, let me grab my stuff here. So just a, a few quick things to talk, uh, through. Uh, the first one is, is a, is a very peculiar one. Um, we have sampling that's done regularly on our, uh, GAK filtration system for water. Um, we sample for, uh, a slew of different PFOS chemicals. Uh, we test, um, in the influent, which is the water that comes in before it runs through the GAK. We test in the mid-fluent, which is the water between the primary vessel, which is the first to capture any, um, PFOS chemicals. And the secondary chemicals, that's the mid-fluent. And then we test the finished water as it's finished going through the filtration system called the effluents. Um, and we had on April 1st, the minorist of hit, I don't even know, it's not really a word, but we had a very minor hit, but a very, um, interesting question that opposed because we got a hit of 2.3 parts per trillion of PFOS. Uh, as we all reviewed that, it didn't make sense to any of us. And by any of us, I mean, um, the village, Jim, Josh and myself, it didn't make sense to county, it didn't make sense to the state and didn't make sense to CT Mail. Um, who the companies were using, um, as their engineering consultants on that. And the reason it didn't make sense was for a few reasons. Um, PFOS is detected in small amounts in the influent, but it very rarely, um, as things progress through the, the GAK system, uh, it almost never is showing up. It's other ones that show up. PFOA in our normal free filtered water comes in between 300 and 600 parts per trillion. That's kind of, uh, what started all this off. Um, PFOS has only been regularly detected like the 5, 10, 15 range. Um, New York State changed their, um, uh, requirements of PFOS and PFOA regulations on it recently into 10 parts per trillion. This was 2.3, which is literally like 200 times smaller than what PFOA has been happening. But it didn't make sense that we would see in the finished water, but not find it in the mid-fluent and not find it in other parts of the GAK. So the next working day, CT man was back, they took more samples, the county was right in, the state was right into it. Um, and they rushed the reports, they sent us the preliminary findings and they sent us the finalized findings. And, um, as we expected, we did not have any other hits in finished water. Uh, so our sort of conclusion is that there was likely some very, very tiny form of, of contamination in the process of taking the samples. Again, 2.3 parts per trillion is so tiny. Um, but it just didn't make any sense for it to be there to begin with. And it is the only time we have had, um, any a hit for anything in our finished water. And we're all basically concluding the same thing, that it was likely just a contamination of the sample, hence the fact that multiple samples backed that up. So it's a weird thing. Uh, we were on it from the beginning. We're all, we're all concluding that it's not an issue, it's not a concern. I know that PFOS is a concern. It's hard not to mention PFOS without having concern and worry about it, obviously, for what we've all been through. But the science, the samples are really detained, that's really all of this was. It is still 2.3 parts per trillion. It's underneath the new regulations from the state. Um, but you know, as we have said in the past, we are a community who is very sensitive to the need to remain PFOS free. So, um, we are still confident in the system. The testing results and samples done since, uh, prove that. And as a transition into one of my next things, uh, DEC, um, likely very soon will be releasing their draft proposed remedial action plan, uh, that is going to explain what, uh, their proposed decision is regarding the future of the village water and where it will come from. Um, that will be happening very soon, probably in the next, uh, few days. And, uh, that will start with a plan that is accessible to everybody in the village office and Cheney Library and online. It will start with a 45-day comment period. Uh, typically that's how they work. And then after that, uh, they'll make their final decision, the record of decision of the rod. So just threw a bunch of things out there. Trustees or anyone else have a question about that?
Not about that one in particular, but the DEC promised an update on the Oakman Street property at the end of, uh, First Street. They've, uh, it looks like nothing's happened in quite some time and that be ceded or is it just gonna stay like it is? There's still a lot of cement structures still up there. You, can you ask them what the status is?
They, um, they're, I actually was, um, had someone from Open, so he reached out to me. Um, to start the discussions about what the final, uh, end game in a sense for that property is going to be. Um, it hasn't progressed further than, you know, we've had a couple of emails and there was a plan that some students or that someone had done, uh, a, a local had done as a college paper. And there was also the plan that was put forward through the, um, LWRP. So that's all coming. Um, and when that comes, I'm gonna be making sure to include, uh, the trustee who's involved in parks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other questions about that? All right. Uh, moving on, I just wanted to say, um, it was my pleasure to sit next to, uh, Senator Gillibrand. And, um, you know, share the table, town supervisor, Sardam, I know, um, trustee Emily Marpy and trustee Bob Decker were also there as, as well as a bunch of other community members. Um, it was neat to come full circle and see that, uh, there is still some folks fighting for what's right in terms of the medical monitoring bill. I just wanted to thank Senator Gillibrand. I wanted to thank everyone who has been there as well as everyone who has been a part of that, uh, process, um, as we work to, to right this wrong. So I wanted to make note of that and thank her and thank everyone involved. Um, Erswamo, we talked about last meeting and we had actually, I think, approved, uh, a bid, but we had a communication breakdown. Um, so we didn't, the bid didn't go out. We weren't sure who was gonna do the bid. We now know that we have a revised, uh, with new dates, um, bid to put up later in the meeting. And that will fit within the schedule of if we approve it, it gets advertised tomorrow. Um, bids are due, um, by Monday, the 10th at like 2:00 PM, opened at 3:00 PM and then we can, um, uh, address it in the, uh, regular meeting on the 11th if we choose to. And that's good because our current contract runs out at the end of May. Uh, we originally signed a two-year contract with the option, uh, for three one-year extensions, which we took. So that is a quick update on that. And local laws, I do wanna say we had a loaded meeting tonight, um, and a lot going on. So we are still in the process of rolling out local laws and I'm hoping that next meeting along with possibly a local law about the, um, Lovejoy situation, we'll also be able to roll out the other two that we have been working on. So I just wanna make sure people know, but that is still in the works. Any questions on that, trustees or anyone else? Any of those? All right.
Would, did, wait a second.
Yeah, please.
Um, the local laws, would, was, did the parking come up under that?
Uh, the, we, we have some things we have worked on in the past and some things that Andy has started to scout out for us in terms of parking, but in terms of making changes to parking, um, that would be through a local law. And I know, I think you were, uh, you were the person or one of the people interested in joining into the local law, um, committee. So that is something that when we, when we get that moving, I will be able to hand you all the stuff that Andy and I have been working on and include you into that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? One other thing I forgot to mention is, um, um, just in case anyone was really concerned about and, and wanting to dive into more about this, the sampling, um, I did go in and make sure all of the, um, uh, same, all the, the water testing results are online. It's something that people have asked for in the past and I was able to finally get that done. If you go to our homepage on the right side, you'll see a new thing called the GAK filtration, or you can go to the Husick Falls Water website and, uh, click on the testing. Uh, so I wanna make sure that you guys know that that's there.
Me again, I've just a couple of questions.
Fire away.
Um, does the nuisance law come up? We talked about that and looking at it in terms of ordinance versus local laws. I don't know, Andy, if you remember that we talked about that at, was it the last meeting or the meeting before?
The nuisance law as relates to like sound issues or just general, like if, if they're causing a nuisance?
Um, well, there isn't, there's a nuisance ordinance that includes a whole bunch of different stuff, including noise. But, um, I think I also sent you, um, a copy of the Bennington Noise Ordinance or Noise Law, whatever they call it. Or should I, is that something we should wait until we get the committee set up?
Wait until we get the committee set up, run that up with Andy, um, and, and move forward on that. Does that sound good, Andy?
I think it does. And, and Deb, I, I know there's some type of existing nuisance local law in the village that needs to get reviewed. And in terms of specific noise, and by the way, I would, would suggest this legislation should all be through local law, that, that's quite frankly, the prefer, preferred procedure now, not ordinances. But when you're talking about noise, local laws, uh, those can get somewhat involved. There's potential expenses on behalf of municipality to actually enforce local laws. So those are some things that at a, at a committee level could be discussed in, in any proposal put together from those discussions. So we can work on that, Deb.
And Deb, I forwarded that email you sent me to Andy, so he has those links as well.
Okay, and the other one was the, the leash law, because a lot of people on Facebook are talking about it. As some of you may know, um, and not just that, but I did have a, a couple people talk to me about cats and what cats leave outside, but I don't, honestly, I mean, I keep my cats inside because we lost one when it was hit by a car, but, um, I don't, I don't know, people let cats out, so.
I think, um, with the leash law, and I, I will tell you that, um, I know a lot of people who have gotten, um, really scared about large animals running at them, making a lot of noise all of a sudden unexpectedly. Uh, it is. Uh, it is a a serious concern. Um, there have been issues uh in the village. Um, even recently with a dog attack, we're not saying that that's the case, but um we do need to uh put some serious attention into making sure people are walking their dogs on leashes. I know it's not ideal, I know we don't have a dog park. I think maybe something that somebody brings up later is a possibility. Um, and it's something that we have looked at as a possibility in the past. Um, it puts people in a bad spot if uh, you know, you have a dog and you're walking without a leash. And you know, I have friends who do that. Um, but it does put people in a bad spot, so I understand.
I know, and and picking up after their dogs as well, because that's really gross.
Yes.
It's the one thing I don't like about Paris, so I would like to like that about Huzick Falls that we pick up.
Yeah, we had an issue on my street which Officer Wagner addressed uh dog biting people. But I think what we have to do is educate people about our leash law. And we have so many new people in the village. I think there's a lot of people that really don't even know we have a leash law. And I think our leash law actually says that dog must be leashed or under the owner's control. So I think, I don't know, we can make postcards or something that the police officers can hand out to people on the streets that aren't uh abiding by the law, maybe more on our Facebook page or our our um website or something to educate people. Because like I said, a lot of new people moving in might not be aware of our local laws.
Yes, there are people, I mean, we live in a country, yes, but this part of of Huzick, the village. And I think we need to make sure that people know that. And it's not the same as if you got a big farm where the dogs can run and run and run.
Chief, is that you wanna hop in?
Yeah, if I could, please, because you know, I've had about four different situations that have come up in the past couple weeks involving um the noise ordinance, leash laws, um signage. So I I, I'm hearing that we're gonna be creating committees and this is all gonna go into committees for review. Um, I really think that this needs to be addressed as quick as possible. Um, only because it's gonna be a long summer. And like I said, I've been dealing with a number of these issues already. And you know, you try to go forward with what's on the books and you know, there's some, there's some pushback on it. So I really think we need to to get onto these things as quick as we we possibly can. I know everyone's got a lot on their plate and I might be asking a lot. But if we can just look at some of these issues and try to get something for either the next meeting or the the meeting after or or someplace where we can direct the people to come to, to uh talk about their concerns.
Uh, yeah, and maybe um, you know, Deb, chief, maybe Andy as well. It wouldn't be hard to put uh together a really well worded social media posts and ask people to share it, just remind them uh that this is legit. And it's a serious concern.
Especially the the dog issues, because um, you know, we, we, I don't think people understand. It co, it comes to us, we call the dog warden. It gets put in the hands of the dog warden, whether it, and then sometimes it's not answered quickly for whatever reason that might be, and then it comes back to us. Um, and then we're going to talk to the people and you know, sometimes they get upset about it, they don't understand. You know, we have to try to explain it to them. Um, and and it usually works out in in the long run, but it'd be nice just to be able to know exactly where this is going and and direct the people to the sections in the, in the laws. Or a committee at way, maybe they're not liking what the, the way the law reads. At least we can tell them, then come to this committee and you can speak, you know, your concerns on it.
All right, thank you, chief. Thank you, Deb. Um, Deb, if you have more, that's fine. I also wanna make sure that people know that we are in the people to be heard section. So if you do wanna ask a question or share something, doesn't have to relate to the budget, could be related to anything. Uh, just state your name and your address and just as a reminder, we record all these meetings and post them later. So I wanna open up the floor to anyone, Deb or otherwise, trustees or otherwise, if anyone wants to ask a question. Yeah, fire away. Doug, you gotta unmute yourself?
There you go, thank you.
No problem.
I'm looking to who, which department to bring this to in the village. As you know, the uh public parking at Church Street's been quite the issue and has had a spotlight on it. And my understanding that's being taken care of. But I've noticed that on the, in that, adjacent to that public parking spot, there is a private party that owns a two-car carport. That carport and those cars are directly over an underground propane tank. And the filler connection and the valve is right there next to the cars, like a foot away. I looked at that and the regulations are uh any, anything that is a source of ignition has to be 10 feet away from an underground, from the fill, from the connector to relief valve and level gauge, liquid level gauge. Um, so and it also has to, I guess it can go underground too. So I'm just concerned, I don't know who in the village would look at whether or not that is a violation or it's, it's dangerous. Given that the uh filling connection relief valve and gauge are right next to automobiles.
That sounds like a Mark gets a chance to make some more friends. Mark, does that sound like something up your alley?
Yeah, I'll take a look at it. I, I know what you're talking about.
Okay. Man, hopefully it's just something as simple as uh, if you can throw some sort of big concrete, maybe post or something as a safe to measure, I don't know, but I'll let you look at that. So Doug, we're gonna have our code enforcement officer look into that.
Thank you.
Yep, anything else? All right, hearing none, we are going to move into our organizational, organizational uh portion of our meeting. Uh, for those of you uh following along at home who are really into um local government politics. Uh, first off, thank you and bless you. The organizational meeting is something where that is set every year, uh where there's various policies and appointments set out. Uh, I am going to share the screen on our organizational meeting as it's set up right now. Uh, this was actually something that was not done last year due to COVID. Um, so we have been through this and I have one change to add. Um, so I'm gonna walk us through this real fast, you guys, do you guys see it on the screen?
Yes.
Zooming in better?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna walk us through this real fast. Uh, the first part is the organizational chart. This is where we decide the order of the meeting. And right now we have the business uh being the call to order and the pledge moment of silence, which we haven't, we've been doing over virtual, but that's something we do in person. Roll call, we go through correspondence and announcements, mayors, updates as needed, people to be heard. Um, we do reports in that order, committee reports, and then old business and new business. Let me keep going through this for a moment, then I'll, I'll circle back. Um, procedure meetings should be conducted in accordance to preliminary procedure with reference to the revised edition of Robert, Robert rules of order. The schedule is that we have our uh regular meetings on the second Tuesday of each month at 6:00 PM unless we otherwise advertise it, which is required. A ton of agenda for each meeting, the board trustees should be prepared by the mayor and the village clerk and given the mayor and trustees in each department head on the Friday before the meeting. I am constantly failing at that and I apologize profusely on that. Uh, the official newspaper we would be setting as the East of Press and the Official Bank would be Key Bank. Um, so these are things we would set. Um, now if if trustees, if you have any thoughts or things you wanna change or modify, we can certainly speak to that. Uh, let me keep going through to the next part, which is the committees, which we've been talking about. Um, this is uh what the various uh layers and and parts of village government that uh the trustees would be involved in. And as I've said to the trustees, um over many emails, I'm working hard to make sure the trustees are are very much involved um with things more so in the past. And that's something that I, as a leader, have, is is not been my, my strength and something I've been working on. Uh, so I'm really looking to make this um big commitment this year on this. I'm just, and not just out of necessity, but because I just, you know, that's the right way to do this. Um, code enforcement, we would have Kevin and Deb, Court, um Bobby, Dog Bobby, Dog Patrol, Events, Kevin. We don't have a fair housing officer, uh which Maria, I'm gonna ask you to make a great plug for that in a moment.
What is it, what is that?
Maria, you wanna uh talk about that for a moment? Let me see if she's on.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Rob.
Oh, that's fine.
I'm, I'm not 100% sure um what, what you need me to do on that, I'm sorry.
The fair housing officer is 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 just, it's a really, really small and simple thing. I know Vanessa has done it in the past. Trying to think of who else did that.
Well, what does that fair housing officer do?
Andy, is it just that they check um, they check on something if a need or complaint arises?
Uh, Rob, I must admit on that one, I, I don't know the answer on that.
That's, that's how often it's uh, it is used.
Uh, I've had the benefit of being village attorney for going on nearly four years. I've never dealt with that issue for this village. I've not dealt with it in any other municipality. It would sound like it's some kind of uh federal uh legal or regulatory compliance issue in fair housing.
That's how it sounds to me and I feel like there's like one thing a year that has to be signed off on by the fair housing officer.
Feel free to put me on it, Rob.
I'm sure uh that it is one thing that we've had to sign off on. It's normally has something to do when, when we're uh working with grants.
That's, that sounds right, that sounds right. We'll look into that, but uh we're putting Emily on that, so thank you, Emily. Um, Bob Decker is gonna take the lead on finance. Um, Bobby and Kevin on highway departments. Uh, Deb and also Emily had expressed interest in being involved in local laws. Um, economic development, Deb. Um, one that I, one of a few that I've created this year is the municipal office, just being more involved in keeping uh on the day to days of what's going on in the village office in terms of clerk, deputy clerk, and treasurer. Um, I've asked Bobby to take that on and as a deputy mayor, that would make a lot of sense for him to do. Uh, and that would be great. Um, he's taking that on. Parks and grounds, Kevin. Planning and zoning liaison, Craig, public safety, Bobby. Uh, public works for waters, Emily uh with Craig. And public works with sewers, Kevin with Craig. Recycling solid waste, which is basically Erswama, is Emily. Streetlights, Kevin uh and Woods Brook is another one that I have created this year uh to help uh get us oh to the finish line on the two major Woodbrook projects. Um, both Kevin and Craig are going to help out with that. Trustees, is there any additions, changes, modifications you wanna throw in here? If you have any, speak up, otherwise I'm gonna continue on and I, I thank you and I appreciate that. Um, in terms of appointments, we have the appointments listed out here, there's nothing new um or out of the norm. Uh, some of the normal questions that are asked are sometimes they're two-year appointments and other times they're one-year appointments. And it basically is on a rotation every other year, it's either the two-year appointment or the one-year appointment. But past practices, we've always uh appointed them all. Um, Kenny and Keith are written here as provisional because um they were in the process of getting their final tests to hit the, the, the top level certification uh as required. Um, I think by state law, we're operating the wastewater treatment uh plants. Um, and then COVID happened and that prevented um them from, from getting to the endpoint. And that is why, because they don't quite have that yet, even though they know a thousand things and could probably write, write the manual and a lot of the stuff. Um, we have Dan Merrills, who was our former wastewater treatment operator um in, and there's a couple hours a week that he does or I forget the exact requirement, that's the approach there. So uh no changes uh that we're proposing there. And then the one-year appointments this time around again. Um, nothing new to change or make note of, except, except um Damien. We had hired him as the um DPW in office, clean and part-time, and we are going to continue uh with that. Uh, zoning board, we have our three, uh we are still looking for, yeah, 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 Craig, please.
Real quick?
Yeah.
Uh, the fiscal auditor, was that carryover and is Mark Sardam also doing the auditor role?
It would be news to him. Uh, no, we do not have a fiscal au- auditor at this point. Now, it's something that Andy and I had discussed briefly today, that's something we may have to uh look into. I'm gonna speak with Denise about that.
Is that a mandated position that we have to have?
I don't think it's mandated, Andy.
So Craig, on that, what the, the general practice is, it is certainly good, the fiscal kind of responsibility, if there's that ever an audit of the village finances through the state comptroller's office. They like to see uh routine outside auditing of uh fiscal operations for the municipality. I'm not aware that it is mandated by state law, but it's uh certainly favorably viewed by the state comptroller's office.
Rob, is that something we've done in the past?
That's a Denise question. Okay. I don't think we've done it since Marie has been here. Marie, would you agree with that?
Uh, no, we have not.
Judy, Judy, you would know. Do you have any thoughts on this? Are you on Judy?
I just, I just think it, it, it looks like it's a position that we don't have named. That means we should have an action item to name it. If we're not gonna have one, let's take it off the list.
Well, we could certainly take it off now and name it later. Andy, would that be the best way to go?
I agree.
Okay, then uh I will take it off the list for now and we will need to revisit that later. Um, so any other questions? And I have the zoning and planning board here. We have the um nuisance law appeal board, which we'll, we'll have to name it another time.
What, what?
Rob, I have one question, Rob. It, on the planning board, excuse me, Shane Hathaway's appointment was from 14 to 19. Has that been updated or is that?
It has been. I'm sorry, Bob, I must have missed the update on that one, I threw this over this afternoon.
Oh, okay, so it's a different, it's a different year.
20, 2022.
Thank you.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
I'm just asking a question because I haven't.
Please do, Deb.
Um, what is a nuisance law appeal board? If we have nuisance ordinances and we've been talking about nuisance laws, now I'm really confused.
Andy, you wanna take that one? As far as I can remember, I don't recall ever having used a nuisance law appeal board.
Uh, and and I do believe, Deb, that's somewhat unique to the village's nuisance law that I, I talked about. I haven't had to even apply that in, in the four years that I've served as village attorney. Uh, it, it's somewhat unique. I'm not aware of any other similar appeals board in any other municipality that I worked for or have worked in. So we'll review that as part of reviewing that nuisance local law.
Is this another thing we should remove for now and appoint later if we decide it's necessary?
Uh, I, I.
It must, it must be related to the news nuisance ordinance. Is that like when you appeals, I mean, I'm, you know, from Law and Order and watching TV. When you appeal something, it means you're not getting what you want from the first line of whatever. So you appeal it to something else, to someone else.
Well, correct, so, so we'll review that in, in the, the, the terms, the conditions of the village's nuisance law. Rob, I see no problem with maintaining this since it's
Okay.
Named and subject to review of the nuisance law.
Okay. Uh, great, and then um this last bit. Um, so this is sort of the first uh slate of things that we would uh need a motion to approve. So let me go back up for a minute and uh make sure I know what we're approving here first. Andy, the first thing we would be approving is the organizational structure, which includes committees and appointments.
Uh, Rob, this is really within your discretion. Uh, this is one full organizational outline. You can do it in sections or you can uh deal with it as a whole, however.
I have que, I still have questions.
Sure.
If you could scroll back, it's so weird that I can't make it go where I want it to go. Okay, um workplace violence committee? Can, I, I just have never heard of these things.
Workplace violence committee, I think, is a requirement.
It's me other time, or do you wanna tell me?
It, it is a requirement that we have a, a committee in case, in case somebody ever makes a complaint of workplace violence.
Okay, so if, so Judy and Marie getting to a, you know, knock down, drag out, we go to the workplace violence committee, is that what happens?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, if a formal complaints has been made, then yes.
Okay. And ethics is ethic, so, okay.
Anything else?
And the ethics committee, that, those all apply to the village, the village offices and
Yeah.
Village, okay, just checking.
Yep. Trustees, unless there are any other questions, typically in the past, what we've done is accepted a motion to what's highlighted here, approve all meeting and business procedures committee and appointments as laid out for the organizational meeting. So if you, um, let's have a question, I would, uh, entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion, Rob.
Thank you, Bobby.
Second.
Thank you. Also, Bob, uh, any further discussion trustees, uh, on any of this? Okay, he- hearing none, uh, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, carries. The next set of policies and procedures, um, most of these are standard. There is one that I want to discuss in detail and it's actually the number, and that is the, um, emergency purchasing, uh, requirement. So I'm, I'm gonna, um, oh, no, I don't have the procurement policy. Andy, I'm gonna have to grab that procurement policy. Do you have? I have that digitally somewhere. The thing that I wanted to discuss, Andy, wasn't the emergency purchasing, it was the actual, um, procurement policy, correct?
Rob, that's correct. You didn't want to go over that. Uh, do you have that?
Uh, I do. I'm in the process of getting it right now. Um, in the meantime, as I, as I work to get that document available, which I'll grab, um, in a moment, we have the emergency, uh, purchasing requirements, which are listed here. So please take a moment to read that if you haven't. Uh, how we hire personnel, salary, salary personnel receive no overtime. Um, maybe called to work at any time by the chairman of the committee or by the mayor or deputy mayor, salaried personnel are on call seven days a week. And are required to work regular hours pertaining to the work week of the village benefits are not provided to part-time employees. All vacation time must be used by the end of each fiscal year. No vacation time will be held over. No changes to anything there. Uh, overtime must be approved by the committee chair or the mayor. All right. Bear with me for just a minute, please, while I get the procurement policy, uh, document from one machine to the other machine. Uh, the reason I wanted to bring this up is because we've had a couple situations where we have needed to make some, um, some, some purchases. And because of the numbers, not, it's not the policies, it's basically the cutoff points, um, that we, we've had some, some frustrations with this. So I am opening this right now. Uh, let me share this up with you. Okay, this is the village procurement policy. Um, Andy, does this look like the most recent version of this to you?
Uh, yes, it does.
Okay. So the numbers in particular are right here. Uh, applicable public bidding procedures of general municipal law relating to the procurement for service labor and or construction involving more than thirty-five thousands dollars or goods and equipment involving more than nine thousand, one hundred ninety-nine. That is the, that is the current number, right?
Uh, that, Rob, that's, that's correct. That's the version I had. Under state law, under the general municipal law for public bidding purposes, it is any uh, public works project of thirty-five thousand dollars or more or purchase of equipment of twenty thousand dollars or more require a public bidding. If it's below those thresholds, it's then just subject to the municipal procurement policy, all with the, uh, effort to u- obtain lowest cost for taxpayers. But in general municipalities are generally guided by state law. Uh, the thirty-five thousand for public works contracts or twenty thousand for equipment purchase. That requires preparation of bid specs, publication, receipt of bids, opening of bids and award by the village board. Below those thresholds, there's different rules and that's simply the village procurement policy.
I want to scroll down to those right now on the bottom of page two. And this is again, as you see here, we've had this going since twenty seventeen. Haven't made, uh, a substantial change to it yet. In terms of, uh, purchase and documentation, uh, right here under four. Uh, if it's less than ten thousand but greater than five, require a written request or proposal and written fast quotes from more than three vendors. Uh, if it's less than five but greater than five hundred requires written or fax quote from three vendors, less than a thousand but greater than five hundred, requires at least three verbal quotes. Uh, and less than five hundred is left to discretion of the purchaser. Um, what we have discovered as costs have gone up on things is this is, um, again, it's the balance of do we want to have a situation where everyone can sound off? Or, uh, do we want to give a little bit more flexibility to our department heads on making purchases?
I think we should leave it where it is. It hasn't, if we haven't had any issues, I don't, why do we need to change it?
The only issues we've had is that sometimes we've wanted to make some purchases and because it, it just barely hits a particular threshold, um, it is required a little, uh, more work and, and takes more time to get together. If you're content with that, that's fine. But I did want to just state that we have had this come up, uh, occasionally.
Do you have numbers you want to change it to, Rob, or?
I'm kind of on the fence on this. I really wanted to hear what you guys had to say. I know we've had situations where things have slowed down because we've had to go through longer processes, but at the same time, it also shows that we're being fiscally responsible by requiring the quotes and building that culture up. So trustees, what are your thoughts?
Is that due to not being able to get a hold of you or is it due to, uh, just the paperwork?
Uh, it's typically the, making sure to, to find three people or three quotes who can do it. We've had situations, um, where, you know, if it's specialized work for water or for sewer, we're in this sort of weird spot. Um, away from the capital region, there may not be a lot of options around for us. Um, so it has slowed some things up a little bit for, you know, maybe if Jim needs some specific item or work done and only, uh, one or two vendors do it, he's got to do extra due diligence to go see if he can find a third one. Things like that.
I think you just have to be careful that, that people go start, start, start cutting corners and not actually getting the three bids, that's all.
So generally feels like you guys are okay to leave it as is?
That would be my take.
I would think so. I think also that if we know the people we have now and you trust them to whatever, but if we get new people and we're, you know, it's good to have this in place.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to bring that up. So thank you guys for signing off on that. Uh, let me go back to, that's not what I wanted to share. This one. Uh, so this is the, uh, last part of the organizational meeting. We, uh, have the emergency purchase policy, hiring of personnel. We just went over the procurement policy, overtime, um, unless there are any questions or, um, requests, I would entertain a motion to approve the procurement policy, emergency purchasing policy, hiring of personnel and overtime policy.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Deb. Need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, passes. And I'm looking for a motion to close the organizational meeting portion of the village board meeting.
Motion.
Thank you, Craig.
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Carries. Okay. I know that seems like just another frustrating thing we have to do, but it, you know, it's just another commitment to setting policies in an open way. Where people can have comments and then, and their say on it. So thank you for that. And I'm realizing that before we go on, Marie, uh, I, we never swore in our newly elected board members ceremonially and officially. Uh, Marie, would you like to do that right now?
Sure, give me one second.
And while she's getting ready for that, I also realized that I forgot to mention in here, um, that I'm supposed to appoint the deputy mayor at this meeting. So uh, no surprises, I'm going to appoint, um, Bobby Ryan again as deputy mayor. Uh, and I thank him, uh, again, always for his wisdom conversation, uh, willingness to jump in. So thank you, Bobby.
Okay, so
Bobby, thank you.
Thank you. So we've got Bobby as deputy mayor.
Yep.
And what I'm gonna do is read this and each of you can put your own name in as I go so far and follow me through. So say it behind me.
These are all the new trustees who were elected and myself, correct?
Yes. So I'm doing this, um, on behalf of the state of New York, the county rentalier in the village of Cusick Falls. Please state, aye. Robert Allen?
Robert Decker.
Uh, Robin Allen?
Kevin O'Malley.
Robert Decker.
Robert Ryan.
Thank you. Emily? I still have Emily? Okay, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. Swear.
I will support the constitution of the United States.
And I will support the constitution of the United States.
The United States.
And the constitution of the state of New York.
And the constitution of the state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor and trustee.
And I will faithfully
Discharge the duty of trustee. Deputy mayor.
Thank you. Welcome back, Hannah Boyd.
Thank you.
We're in.
That, that was a trippy experience.
I was gonna say that had to have been quite
Different things, the cut, the boxes jumping around.
And when you stop in next, um, Mr. Decker, I need you to sign some paperwork as well as, uh, Emily. And I think I got Rob, so, uh, just checking with me next time you're seeing me.
That's good. Thank you. All right. Uh, reports in minutes. Uh, we have three minutes that were sent out for approval. Um, I'm looking for, um, a motion to approve the March ninth regular meeting minutes.
Motion.
Thank you, Craig. Looking for a second?
Okay.
All right, second, uh, Bobby, any discussion? Um, Bob Decker, feel free to abstain on these since you weren't here for these unless you, you know, feel like you've reviewed them and it's fine. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll say aye.
Okay.
To watch the meetings.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries, looking for motion to approve the March sixteenth special meeting minutes regarding the election results.
Motion.
Thank you, Craig.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bob. Any, any, uh, further discussion? All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Stains, extensions rather, carries. All right. And finally, the March twenty-third special mini minutes for motion to approve.
Motion.
Thank you, Bobby.
Second.
Second.
Uh, give it to
Emily can have it.
Emily first. There we go. All right, further discussion? All in fair? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And, uh, just for a point of reference for new trustees, um, when they're sent out, you can send comments back to everybody or you can make a comment here about something that would be changed and then we would, uh, approve it with the change you would make. All right, um, reports, uh, let's start with the, let's see here. Treasures reports. Um, Denise is no longer on. Trustees, you've all received the reports packets. I'm trying to think if there's anything worth specifically mentioning. We are working, um, on financing the ban and the amount of two hundred fifty thousand for Delaware engineering fees. That is pertaining to a, uh, UV filtration grant that would, uh, bring an additional level of treatment into our processes at the wastewater treatment plant. The reason we are doing this is because it has become a requirement for New York State, which I want to say has to be in, uh, set and operational by September of twenty twenty-two. We went for a grant for this, got it, and it's going to cost a little bit more money than the grant did to do it and do it right. Um, which is what she was working on. I just want to mention that. And trustees, I'll be reading you guys into all the projects going on. I don't know if there's anything else specific to mention. Trustees, unless you have any questions, I'll take a motion to approve the treasure report.
I'll make that motion up.
Thank you, Craig.
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, carries. Police report, chief.
We may have lost him.
I mean, it has been like, we're on like, you know, we're in our third hour and he does have to leave, so, um, Bob, you want to highlight anything in here?
Um, let's see, yeah, just, uh, actually, I know that the number of calls for March was a hundred and forty-two, up thirty-seven calls since February.
Yeah.
That's a little concerning. Calls for the year are three hundred and fifty-six and, uh, in twenty twenty, actually it's down from twenty twenty. So I, I, I guess March must have been just been a bad month. Um, but as far
Saint Patty's Day, Patty. Saint Patty's Day.
Now, now, we didn't even get to celebrate it.
But, uh, other than that, I don't think so. There was, uh, yeah, the year, total arrests for the year to date are twenty-seven. Last year it was twenty, uh, thirty-five after, after March, so.
All right. Um, I will say there've, there've been a lot of, uh, a lot of things the chief and the police have been working on, longer-term, uh, investigations. And as we've mentioned in the past, um, beside EMS and traffic calls, um, it's concerning that we have that many domestic calls, but it is nice to know um, that we have, uh, that group in the village, um, who's now up, up and running and available. Um, and the police continue to use that as an asset. Chief's always come up to him and how that's really been helpful, so. Unless anyone else has questions, I will take a motion to approve the police report.
I'll make that motion up.
Thanks, Craig.
I'll second.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, further discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Carries. All right, code enforcement report, Mark. And please, uh, remember, I know you sent out a list of things to Marie that you wanted to bring up. Please feel free to discuss those here, um, the trustees.
Okay, you guys better buckle up. We're gonna be here for a while. Just what you want to hear, right?
Sorry, you're going through a tunnel. I, I can't hear you.
Um, so, uh, we'll try and hit the highlights here. Uh, sixty-two mechanic street? We really need to, to, to move on this, I think. Uh, and maybe I suggest that, uh, uh, you know, a, a motion to, to move forward with, uh, maybe any and I and, and the mayor signing any documents that need to be signed to, uh, go ahead and put this, uh, property out to bid as is, or, you know, uh, my, my thought and the whole thing was, uh, as part of the bid process, somebody would describe what they intended to do with the property. Um, and, and offer the price that they want, they would give the village. But something along those lines.
Didn't we do that once already and got no takers?
We did it with stipulations the first time. We, uh, you know, and still somebody is gonna fix it up, still gonna bring it up to code, but I think we had, we had outlined probably fifty, sixty thousand dollars worth of materials that were going to be needed. So, so I'm suggesting this time we do it without that. Just somebody gives an outline of what they intend to do with the building.
And for newer trustees, this was a, a property that I think the village got from the bank with some extra funds around the time I had started as mayor, Mark. Does that sound right to you?
Yeah, the property was donated to the village by Wells Fargo.
Um, so
We still have those funds?
Well.
I can't.
Well, the, well, the funds were for demolition of the property. I think that was our, our, uh, goal at one point was to demolish it. We got a bid. I think, Mark, wasn't it sixty-five thousand dollars?
We, we, I think we got, Wells Fargo gave us thirty thousand to our demolition and the bid was seventy-eight.
Yeah, that, that sounds, that's right.
Yeah.
You know, maybe this is something that if, if, if we put the bid out and no one takes it, maybe this, we're training our guys in demo. We're gonna have people here to doing demo on the Woods Brook properties probably in late summer, early fall. If we If we get no hits on the bids, maybe we add this into the agenda of things that we need to get demoed.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, but I think we ought to at least give it one more shot. We had this discussion via email, I think, with Bobby and Kevin.
Right, right, Mark. Right, I agree. We should at least take one more shot at it because the, the downside to knocking the house down is we take it off the tax rolls.
Yep.
So, so what's the next step? What do we have to do?
Yeah, Andy, I'm all for the next step.
Let's, we talked about this one, so let's, let's do it. Let's pull the trigger.
Andy, what do we need to do?
Well, Mark is correct. Some motion to authorize putting together that bid package that should be coordinated with, with Mark and the mayor and Bobby and Kevin, it sounds like have been involved in this. Obviously, the village does have the authority to sell village-owned property. You put it out to bid before, this would be simply putting together the bid spec and advertising for receipt of bids on the property. So there'd be a, a motion to authorize preparation of bid specs and advertise for bids to sell the property.
Somebody want to so move that?
I'll make that motion up.
Thank you Craig.
Second.
Kevin, further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's, boom. Mark, what's next?
One fifteen Main Street. We, I know that this has been hung up at the county. I think it's no longer hung up the county. I think they own it.
I have an update for that, and I also, as I discovered today, also have an update for one fourteen church. We just got the notice that that has also been foreclosed and is in, is owned by the county now. We have had some discussions with the county. Andy has spoken with Bill Film. I have been working to touch base with my contacts in the county. He's had some tough circumstances over the past week, so I am waiting to hear back from him when he is free. But this is very much something that we want to take down as part of the Woodsbrook, and I guess my only question is, are we gonna make it a couple months to get to that point where we can do the demo with all the Woodsbrook properties?
Well, I think especially.
I'm just gonna say the foundation is compromised. The, I sent out some pictures last week. You know, probably sixty percent of the front wall, which would be the main street-facing wall, and most of the southern wall is compromised. I mean, severely.
Are we still talking about the one fifteen Main Street, or did we switch?
No, it's one fifteen Main.
I mean, I, this property's been an eyesore for years, and I think the children should be taken down immediately. It's been, we've had orange fence up there, and it's also right in the area where there's a sinkhole or a hole in the, the property next door, and I really think we should jump on this one, not wait for our crews to be trained on demolition and have an outside contractor take it down.
Andy, if we put out a, a bid for demo estimates or whatever.
I, I have to jump in first. Understand, this property was the subject of a purchase contract through the Woodsbrook Grant Program with the property owner that did not close primarily because of the outstanding tax issue. The mayor and I have been in communications with the county for well over a year plus concerning this property. The, the issue is, the village does not own the property right now. It can't go out to bid to demolish it without.
Sorry.
Formal unsafe building process, which itself takes several months, as you will recall. We have been in communication with the county in an effort to work out an arrangement where, rather than the county taking title through the tax foreclosure process, that the purchase contract under the Woodsbrook Grant Process can proceed to closing, let the village acquire title, and then utilize the state grant monies for the demo costs. That would benefit, obviously, the village through the Woodsbrook Project for flood control purposes, but it was also, also benefit the county by eliminating any kind of demolition costs that the county may incur if they do take title. So we're continuing to work with the county on that, and hopefully, we're gonna make progress on that within the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, and my two cents on that is it just needs to be the priority property that it gets addressed.
Andy, is there any issue with going through the process, even if it doesn't work out with the, the county?
Well, e- either this is gonna get resolved within the next few weeks in terms of moving forward with the acquisition under the Woodsbrook, or it's not, and the county would take title. And then Mark Surdam, you're gonna be dealing with the county as fee title owner on the safety of the building. It, it's really, at this point, fish or cut bait time on getting it done, and we've been trying to work through this process with the county now for well over a year, and we have not been.
So Mark, we hear you, and Kevin, we hear you. This is gonna be the priority, and they, basically, the next week to week and a half, and I think that in terms of the next, maybe even the special meeting, we have an update next week, but by the eleventh of May, we'll definitely know what's going on with this. Um, are you guys okay if we wait until that next regular meeting in three weeks to start the processes if it falls through with the county for some reason?
Yeah, there's, there's a couple issues going on there, and so, but, you know, I, as I look at the overall structure, even though the foundation is a serious issue, you know, I'm not seeing major cracks. I'll continue to monitor it. You know, I'm not seeing any major issues that showing me that the house is moving significantly, you know, just I worry about that much of the foundation being gone.
Yeah, almost one half of that left-hand side is completely gone.
Yeah. Okay.
But one, one of the, one of the things worries me is we're, if we're gonna be counting on the Village Highway to start tearing houses down, we discussed earlier how shorthanded we are. How are we gonna have them take down five, six, seven, eight houses when we only have a crew of five people?
Neil has been aware that this is something we've been planning for the summer, so he is planning for basically having guys doing that work instead of his other normal stuff. That's part of it. We're gonna have our guys be trained to do some of the work using the funds that the state gave us and granted and approved. Um, and obviously, the things like the air monitoring, asbestos abatement are, would not be us, but would be others coming to do that, but you know, your, your, your point is well made, Kevin, and I think in the budget, we have, I think, enough funds to, again, hire the, the two summer help, possibly even more and get a third, and that would help with some of the day-to-day stuff and allow our guys to be focused on this.
So if they didn't have the time to do it, is there money left in the Woodsbrook buyout to actually put it out to bid and hire a demolition company?
If I could weigh in on that, Kevin, the way the program worked was a proposed budget was submitted, and that's been routinely updated by the mayor with help from Denise. And within that, the, the budget was based on village personnel taking down the buildings. If that does not prove to be available because of personnel issues, then a revised budget would go to the state for review on bidding out and having a private contractor do the demo work. So if, if, we, we need to know that, quite frankly, fairly urgently as well. Will we have the personnel and available equipment in time to get that work done? And if not, there needs to be immediate work done with that budget with, with the state.
Kevin, I have to get a couple documents ready for the state anyway over the next couple of days, so when I have that, I will get a time to read you in on all of the things that are going on with the buyout program.
Yeah, just one other thing. I was down looking around the Hall Street area and checking on some of the mark, things Mark was talking about in the house on Main Street, but also down and back in, on Hall Street. One of the houses has a car in the garage. I'm not sure whether somebody's just using our, our garage, or the, the village's garage to park their car in, but I don't think anybody left a car behind when they, they sold us the property.
No, that, that car, that garage was empty. I was in that garage last fall. That, that garage is empty. Now, I, I walked by it a few times. I've never actually looked in. I just assumed it was empty, but.
Yeah, there was a car in one of the garage. I think it was Winnie Restino's property where the.
Yeah, that's really, that's, yeah, that, that would surprise me. I'd be.
Are you talking about the garage behind Winnie's house?
Correct.
Because there's a, there's a right-of-way that goes through, oh, no, wait a minute, that's.
Oh, that's the property up.
No. Tilly's, you're thinking of.
So somebody's, somebody's car, somebody's car squatting in our, our garage.
I can, I'll get down there tomorrow and take a look at that and see if we can, I'll check with the police and see if we can figure out whose car that is.
That's good. All right, thank you. Mark, what else you got for us?
Uh, you know, just a couple things that have come up that really we're gonna have to address at some point. The parking in the front yard has come up before. We, we are gonna need to address that somehow because that is happening in many locations. Um, and I think our law, if I remember correctly, just simply states there will be no parking in the front yard, but maybe, you know, it does make sense in some areas to allow people to do off-street parking, and if we can do it to the side of a house, or, you know, something like that, it makes more sense, but, you know, we're starting to see more and more, I think, with vehicles in the front yard.
I have a neighbor, Mark, who has his truck, and he has what used to be a bomb squad truck, and he has a camper in his front yard. In fact, you can't even see his front yard.
At least he doesn't have a pond in the front yard anymore.
Yeah, but if he had a pond, he wouldn't have room to put all those trucks.
I know what property you're talking about, and I, I guess.
I'm sure you do. It's.
For some clarification and, you know, and, but it, quite simply, if I just follow that law, I just start, you know, I can just start telling people there's no parking in the front yard.
Yep.
Yeah, Mark, a lot of these properties where the people's gonna be parking in their front yard are people that are renting single-family homes. And I did talk to Robert Murphy from Barton Le Judas, who worked on our zoning update, and asked him about this, and Mark and I were discussing the parking on the side of the house, not directly in front of the house, but some of these people are just driving up over the curb. That would require a curb, it should require a curb cut from the village at, at their expense, and then they would be able to park in their front yard, but that would require a change in our zoning law. So Robert Murphy, I think, was gonna contact you and perhaps somebody else too, and try to maybe set up a meeting at our, maybe our next meeting and discuss some of these issues.
Well, yeah, there was that, and that is one of the things in my pile, because there was a number of things that came up as a part of our last, the zoning upgrade, questions, you know, different conflicts, some, just some things that need to be addressed in the zoning where there's issues, so.
Yeah, I think, I think boarding houses came up at one point earlier last year. The other thing that's, somebody mentioned to me, and I've seen it myself, is storage containers being used for storage, and not necessarily in commercial areas, but in residential areas, and that's happening according to Rob Murphy from Barton Le Judas and other areas that other committees are dealing with, especially in R-one and R-two districts' residentials.
Yeah, that nee, that needs to be addressed. I mean, I have a situation right now at, on River Street where I have been in tou, in touch with the owner. Kevin, you brought, you had, when you mentioned that, I knew of one right off the top of my head, because when that guy did that, I told him, he, he was doing a rehab project, so I said, and the house wasn't secure at that point. I said, well, this is fine for the rehab project, but it's gonna need to leave, and him and I had a phone conversation yesterday about it. So, but I told him, he's, he's welcome to, you know, to go before the zoning board for variance, but, you know, I also told him my concerns, and I stopped and took some pictures, and, you know, I didn't, I didn't lead him on in any way that that was gonna happen. I just told him he had the right to, to, you know, appeal for a variance.
Yeah, sometimes people hear what they want to hear.
Well, I looked up some laws from other committees regarding the storage containers, and one community had something similar to what Mark said. If it's a construction project, you go to the building inspector, you get a short-term permit for six months, a year, whatever it's gonna be, and then after that time, that has to be removed.
Yeah, and this one is just like totally out of place down on River Street for a character of the, you know, it doesn't meet setbacks, and just out of place for character of the homes in that area, you know, it just, it really shouldn't be there. Uh, so that's coming up, and then the other thing, and I don't know if I get this, is the whole railroad track issue down there. Now, part of that came up again today. We've got an issue, and Bobby can chip, Bobby was there, met with Jamie Jerome. Uh, we got a drainage issue on Griffin Avenue where a part of the culvert collapsed. Part of, you can see where the culvert is completely rusted out at the bottom, where the water goes into the culvert. The road is sagging. It's going to be an issue. You know, so that whole area, and I, and I brought this up as part of the railroad track discussion too, is something that when we went through, I think it was last year, and did the, the five-year floodplain assessment for projects that we needed to address, that area, Woodsbrook is one area, but then this area, Griffin and Rogers, was another area that we need to address. And that's, this particular issue that just came up today is something that maybe we can work with the, work with the town on to, to try, we're gonna have to fix this no matter what. So we need to take advantage of this, and Jamie had a couple ideas to improve that part of the infrastructure that's going to need to be improved anyway.
Where is this?
And I, I did. It's, it's right on, it's on the corner. It's actually on Griffin Avenue, just off the town property of the athletic, of the skating bike, skating rink, just right on the Griffin Avenue side.
Okay.
And it's right before, it's actually like in the third T of the country club. The culvert goes across the road into that wooded area, wooded swampy area, just past, yeah, it just passed Billy Sparks's house, and Jamie called, he, he called Neil yesterday, and Neil told him that, you know, he was away, and so he asked me to meet him there, and I met him there today, and I talked to Neil prior to going up there, and I talked to Neil afterwards, so, and then Mark, Jamie called Mark while I was there, and then Mark, Mark met with Jamie as well.
So is this something?
Ideas, but. But.
No, I was just gonna ask you, is this something we, that we can start working on before Neil gets back?
No, Neil does not want to start working on it before he gets back. It's, it's not, as Mark said, I mean, it's, it's an issue we need to address, but it's, the road's not going to cave in right now, I don't believe. But it, but it needs to be addressed in the near future, and Neil told me he specifically did not want to have it done. He told Jamie Jerome that he could start, he could fix the culvert enough to bring it up so that water would flow through there, so we wouldn't have an issue, but it, it'd have to be addressed between the village and the town along with Mr. Jerome.
Okay.
And he's, and he's, actually, he has a lot of expertise in that field as well, and I, as, you know, I'm sure Mark, he, he filled you in with same type of information.
Oh, yeah.
And I think.
Yeah, he's willing, he's willing to work with us and help us and, you know, but he's, you know, he wants to improve his property too, and but he can do like the design part of things. I mean, this is what they do for a living, what he does for a living, so.
Yeah.
So, and the other part of that, as far as the railroad tracks go, you know, the bottom line, end of the day, all the stuff down there is that culvert, I think most of us agree, is not a sufficient size for the changes that have happened on that side of the village with, over the years, all the new homes and everything, the water runoff that happens because of new homes, new, you know, paved streets, things like that, when that, that becomes a choke point at the, at the railroad tracks, and I think we saw that even if they, railroad doesn't want to admit to that, we saw that with the twenty seventeen flood, because part of those railroad tracks washed out right there at that one spot. And all they did was dump stones back in there, so, but the way, after all this, and we did get, we seemed to get a lot of attention about it, but at the end of the day, they agree to work with the village if the village is, is in agreement to have some kind of an engineering study done to say that that definitely is an undersized culvert. And that's kind of where we're at with that. You know, but, so I'm just, I'm throwing that out there. I don't know. I mean, open to ideas and suggestions, but I think most of us believe that that culvert at the railroad tracks is undersized.
Sounds like there's thing, they just want to, they want to.
You broke up, Deb, so I didn't hear.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. It sounds like they, they're basically saying to us, oh, yeah, you want that? Then prove it. Prove that you need it.
Uh, no, they're not basically saying that. They are saying.
They're saying that, okay.
But we need to, hey, Mark, do we have the ability to enforce speed limit with the railroad? I mean, they have a department called INR that sets the speed limit of the tracks through town. As a village, can we override that and say you will go five or ten through the village, and that's putting heat on?
I don't know. They're like.
No, we don't, we don't have the authority to do that. It's a, it's a bigger deal with a lot higher up level than we are.
Even under safety concerns?
I think all of that stuff is dictated by um, federal regulating bodies.
FRA, yeah.
So what they're, what they're telling us, uh, Bob, is that they inspect that, the section of tracks twice a week. And they have set the standards, they say it's, it's not a dangerous situation, other than the fact it's dangerous enough that they've lowered the speed limit in that area. Uh, even if they don't adhere to it, they have uh, lowered it.
Did they tell you that all the experience retired, and they're just young kids who really don't know that much and? But, you know.
No, what they told us is that uh, you know, nobody's supposed to be on the tracks. When you're on the tracks, you're trespassing, so.
That's true, okay. There's no way we can force their hand, then, I guess. Call the FRA, have the FRA come in.
We're, I mean, we're trying. I'm open to suggestions. I think it's, you know, and the thing of it is, is when are we proven right? You know, when a, when a train tips over?
Exactly.
In that area, you know, that's.
I mean, those trains are hauling. Those trains are hauling horrible stuff that'll wipe out this town. That's not something to mess around with. Maybe just a call to the FRA, and maybe, I'm sure you might have, but it, you know, that's federal, and they will come take a look.
Mark, have they reached? I'm sorry, Bob. Mark, have they reached out to uh, Delgado's office about uh, contacting the uh, Federal Transportation Authority or Administration? Cause it is under federal control.
Yeah, it's controlled by the FRA, the Federal Railroad Ministry. They do inspect. Uh, they do spot inspections. I know I was in the signal department in the railroad, that was my section of track. They do spot inspections where they can just show up, and they will, I think they will act upon it if we can get ahold of them and explain. They, I mean, they have to at least come look at it, I would think.
Well, and by the, by the engineer's own admission too, when they, when that section washed out, and it was the tracks li- literally hanging in the air, because all the stone underneath it washed away, all they did was dump stone in there and built it back up again. And the guy, the engineer even acknowledged the right way to do it would be to, you know, take it down uh, and tamp it as you go back up with the materials, which is what I'm saying. And yeah, you take it back down, you put a new culvert, a larger culvert. And yeah, and build it back up properly, but they, you know, he, his point was that's a three, four hundred thousand dollar project, and they're not gonna do that.
I think, I think Kevin's idea of reaching out to Delgado was a good idea. I mean, he really looks out for his district. And.
Yeah, I can see if that, I can uh, ask if that was done. You know, a lot of this stuff was uh, you know, I was invited to a lot of it, it was taking uh, you know, the uh, uh, Bruce McTeary, uh, and just so y'all are aware too, I mean, Jerry, Jerry uh, uh, McCullough Senior, he's been, he's been a bulldog on a bone with this thing. From the very beginning, since all this happened, he was getting on the town board. He's been pushing this all along. And he's been trying to get people to listen without much uh, success, until he got to finally uh, you know, Bruce and uh, Jeff involved, and the county involved, and then they got other people involved, and that's how it all kinda snowballed.
Yeah, I was just curious why nobody from the village is notified when talking to everybody else except us, and when it was in the, in the village area.
No, I, I, I get that.
I still think we gotta reach out to the FRA, and maybe, maybe uh, Delgado can do it, but uh, I think it could be done by us, maybe. It's just a simple phone call. Um, and maybe you have, I don't know, but uh.
I have to check, Bob. I'm not sure how far that, where it's gone.
Cause they're pretty much responsible, and they will, they hold the railroad companies to a standard. And they, they can hand out pretty big fines, so if we have pictures or from the past, I don't know, but it's worth a shot. Why not?
I wish, yeah, we've had a tough time coming up with the pictures. Everybody had them, but I don't know.
I've, I've got pictures of that somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, if we can walk with some pictures, that, that would be helpful. That was all I had.
Is that it? Sounds like a Brian Buschner.
That was, that was.
No, but that was all good stuff.
You approve that report, Rob.
All right, thank you, Craig. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Deb. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Carries. All right, thank you again, Mark. Uh, next reports, um, we don't have a community service report. We're gonna discuss that later in the meeting, so we'll come back to that. Um, clerk, deputy clerk report. Anything you wanna mention, Marie, or anything you wanna ask about trustees? Ten property changes this month?
Yeah, at least ten property changes. Um, the water bills went out, uh, water sewer bills went out. Payments are coming in. Uh, we had a lot of water leaks this time, so we tried to reach out to people. Um, we have sent some letters out to people whose meters are not working, so we want people to be aware of that, checking, you know, if I think their bill was a little high, checking on water leaks, because that toilet running makes a big difference. So, um, that's been keeping us busy.
Unless you guys have any questions, we'll take a motion to approve. Clerk, deputy clerk report?
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, carries. Uh, highway department report. Bobby, anything you wanna know? Discussed a lot of things so far.
Um, well, the only thing, uh, there's a couple of things, but uh, as far as um, the, the uh, street cleaner, um, we will be picking it up on May 6th. And Neil plans on starting cleaning the, the sweep the streets, starting May 10th. And that'll be, we need to post this on the village website, Rob. It's um, May 10th, do not park on the even side of the house, e- even side of the street, I'm sorry, and then on the 11th, don't park on the odd side.
Marie, can you make note uh, for me to do that on the website and social media, and also uh, the water, um, the, the hydrant flushing? Thanks, Bobby. Keep going.
Yeah, and uh, let's see, uh, there's, you know, Neil's just got some odds and ends here. They're working on the St. Mary's Fountain, Fountain to repaint that and have that running for the summer again. Uh, gonna be painting crosswalks and parking areas on Main Street. Um, the trail cams are out um, on the uh, on the Greenway, so they're, they're watching to make sure that there's no uh, vandalism again like we had last year. Um, just uh, he assisted, assisted uh, Ken and with KPI Sewer Main Cleaning in the video on numerous streets. Um, let's see, he also looking to do some sidewalk replacement on Main Street with Chip's money, once uh, I, he gets quote back from contractors, like you, he would discuss, Kevin. And uh, he is out of town till May 5th. I apologize, not the 3rd. It's from April 19th to May 5th. And he's also uh, pushed the guys on the highway to make sure they use up all their vacation time before June 1st. So we don't have any issues as far as uh, unused vacation time and losing it. Um, and then I did wanna address the um, uh, with Neil, I discussed with him the possibility of looking into a dog park on the Waterworks Road. Seeing after last month, that we have, you know, we talked with uh, with the Little League, and how they don't want people with dogs, which is totally understandable, um, on the ball fields. But Neil had some ideas of where to put it down in that section across from the new highway. And him and I talked, you know, approximately like a four-foot-high fence. And like, make it like a hundred-foot square. Um, and initially, we may, we may, you know, to get, if we can get it up and running, he's talking about, you know, just uh, putting some topsoil down, and then seating it, and then fencing the area in. And we could do some temporary fencing initially with a couple gates. And then uh, once we figure out where we can get some money to make it a, you know, buy a, and get a bid on a permanent fixture as far as fencing, we would go with that. But that's just right now, him and I, we're gonna get together when he gets back to get on and measure out an area, but that's the, the amount of uh, space we talked about, and to be honest with you, um, I, I did some little research uh, looking online at dog parks, and that hundred, hundred by hundred square seems small, but it really is not that bad. Um, I looked at Troy's Dog Park, and Troy's Dog Park was much smaller than that uh, size. Um, so we, you know, that's, it's something, I'm not saying it's gonna, a hundred percent it's gonna happen, but it's something I think I, we definitely would like to see happen. I know it's been brought up previously, and it, it kinda just uh, fell off the radar, and I think we need to address it again.
And Bobby, you're talking about not on the same side as the new highway garage, from out across the street?
No, the opposite, the opposite side, across the street. In, on the left-hand side, like right, you know, where Neil allows people, residents to go down and, and, and dump brush or whatever.
Yeah, it was that potential spot where they were. They were thinking of doing a ball field there at one point.
Yes.
Okay, that, that's, I just wanna note that, because the last time this came up a couple of years back, it was on the other side of the road. Uh, and the neighbors whose properties would have been up against it, were not that happy about it, and we heard that.
That's correct. The same side as the, as the new highway garage, that, that, that was put kibosh to it, you're right.
Yep, okay. That's great, Bobby. Thanks for uh, for.
Hey, Bobby. Bobby. Who owns, or all, or all of you, who owns the old Oak Mitsui parking lot? That's almost ready to be a dog park. Fence is up. I, I, who owns that?
You're talking about that at the bottom of First Street?
The bottom of First Street, the park, the parking lot. No, they do, okay. Put, put the heat on them, will you? That'll cost us nothing.
They're working on that right now, but that is locked into the super fund or potential super fund or mediation requirements they have to do, and it's being overseen by DEC. But that is something that we're all hoping, us, the village, I think them, I think the state would love to see that become a park, and I think that area would have, it'd be nice to have some form of park there.
Yeah, and I mean, just the little parking lot, but just the, where they, where the workers used to park. It's got the fence around, it's already paved.
I know.
You know, it'd be like doing, it'd be like doing no work, man. Maybe call them up and say, let us have it, but just throwing it out there, if we uh, could've got our hands on it, no work needed to be done.
Yeah, that would be a perfect fit, but that's about the right size.
You're talking about the area that's a brown field, like where the building was?
No.
No, across the street.
Right across the road.
We're up against railroad tracks.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Thanks, thanks for the clarification.
Yep. Anything else, um, Bobby?
No, that's it from Neil's end.
Any other questions for Bobby? If not, take a motion to approve the highway department report?
I'd just like to say, hopefully people, hopefully people will move their cars down the second ward. That's always an issue during sweeping time and snowplowing time.
Well, yes, and I think that um, we, I don't know if Chief Ash is still on or not, but I think we need to make sure he's aware of these uh, dates, and make sure that his officers are available during the day to take care of making, move their cars.
That's a great idea. That's a great idea. Thanks, Bobby. And thanks, Kevin. Uh, looking for motion to approve the highway department report?
Motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll give that to Emily.
Second.
Bobby, thank you. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, sewer department report. Kevin, Craig, anything you guys wanna highlight?
No, I don't have my hard copy in front of me.
Okay, they had a, a big increase in March, which looking historically is, is somewhat typical. Uh, we doubled what we took in in February. We're still lower uh, than the previous year. Um, so that's it. I guess we're less full of it.
The only thing I can say is, I still think we should change the name of that road.
I do not disagree with you. I would be, I'd be up for that. That may require local law, though, and I happen to know a trustee who's now involved in local law, so she can look into that.
How about uh, Father Tom Zelker Road? He'd get a kick out of that.
Oh, he would love that. Oh, man, that's so funny.
That's a great idea, Kevin.
That is so funny.
I know.
And yet, it, it would be an entrance to the Greenway, so it actually, that, that, I know it's, it's kind of a joke, but that also could be a nice thing. Of course, I don't wanna associate him with the sewer plant, okay? Maybe associate the sewer plant with uh, him, I don't know. Anyway. Any other thoughts on the sewer department report?
Make a motion to approve the report, Rob.
Thanks, Craig.
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you, Bob, for the discussion.
I just have one question, and that's, no, Rob, Rob, just one question. How soon will, I, I know you said that Kenny and Keith were both, it was delayed in them getting certified. How soon will that happen? Do we know now?
I mean, it's been pretty soon for like a couple of years now.
A lo- right, a long time. That's why I'm asking, I, because I know that, and, and I know, cause I do the time sheets for the highway, and I know that in, you know, that thank God we have Danny Merrill's, who hit, is certified, that we can use as a, as our certification person, and but we pay him four hours, it's four hours uh, uh, a pay period.
Ironically enough, I think the village is actually making money on the deal, because when they get the certification, which we're very glad to do an offer, that they will get a a pay increase, it's just really on them to do that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think we gave them a certain amount of time to get it done as well. Of course, with COVID, that changed things.
Sure did.
Right.
All right. Um, to be approved this report yet?
No, that was, no, we hadn't voted on, we hadn't made the approval yet.
All right, all in favor? All right.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, water department reports. Um, nothing huge to note. Yeah, Emily, any, everything, I mean, all the stuff that happened was early April, and we have a gap change, or is there anything else to note, Emily?
Nope.
Awesome. Unless you guys have questions for Emily? Looking for motion to approve?
Motion.
Back in.
Uh, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right. I think we're gonna zip through this next part, cause a lot of us have said kind of everything we're, uh, gonna say before, oh, we did the minutes on order. Trustee, committee reports. Bobby, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No.
All right, Kevin, is there anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, yes, during the meeting, I had a email from the um, American Legion, and they have changed their mind and would like to do a parade. Of course, it's not gonna be as it would have been with music and that kinda thing, but I think they're getting uh, a lot of feedback from people that uh, wanna take part in some kind of a celebration to honor those who gave the, made the ultimate sacrifice, so I don't know whether we need to approve that or.
Why don't we do a little bit of research into that and um, have it on the agenda for next Thursday, the 29th? And if we need more time, we always have the regularly on the 11th. I, I, just like we said before, I'm, I'm tentatively in favor, but we also have to walk the balance uh, of, of the COVID requirements and restrictions.
And the other thing is um, we didn't do summer concerts last year. And I did talk to Bill Gaylord, and he told me that the um, community band isn't ready to go back, since they're all packed in that tight space in the gazebo. He said it could be late, late summer for them. But uh, I would like to start doing the summer concert series in the park uh, starting in July. I've looked at the uh, guidance from the state, and our crowds are typically three or four hundred people, and uh, the guidance is for on 12, or 2,000 and under. And we would fit that criteria with restrictions of either a COVID test or wearing a mask.
Uh, I think uh, we just need to run it through uh, Andy to see if there are any other legal requirements, but I'm again, tentatively in favor moving forward with that, as long as we can do it responsibly and make sure we don't do anything, uh, make any uh, uh, legal missteps.
Yep, I looked at the uh, the state requirements, and that seemed to be the, the only thing. And it would be 20% of 2,000, and that's about where we get anyway to any, any event.
Okay. All right, anything else, Kevin?
No.
All right, thank you. Emily, anything?
No.
Say hi to whoever that was. Craig, anything?
Nope.
Um, Deb?
Um, I don't know if this is the appropriate place or time.
Let's pretend it is.
My book, okay. Um, shoot, lost my page. Okay. My book, okay, um, shoot, lost my page, okay, can, back to the parking thing, the signs that were put up. Are really confusing and sort of, they don't, they don't seem to be. Well, well.
Is this the Church Street uh public parking by the bank?
Yeah, where there's no overnight parking in the middle. And there's. Two hour parking in some places, no, yeah, no, and John Street is two hours parking, but. And that for me is a business, but also for what's happening with the village and going forward, that um, I think it's important that that needs to get. Um, enforced on John Street and I don't know if it happens on Church Street or Main Street, cause I'm on John Street, but. Um, if it's two hour parking, it should be two hour parking, I mean, this, people are stopping from out of town or passing through. They don't know that there's a parking lot right in the back. Um, so some of the signs, so I think, and I know, I know it's more complicated because you have to note when the car. Got there and then you have to keep track of it, so it's two hours, so back in the old days, they used to put a chalk mark on the tire. So it's, it's like double work for one ticket, I know that, but maybe there's a way that Bob or. Whoever could work that out.
I would like to address the Church Street lot, Deb, while you're, while you brought it that up. Uh, I took Officer, uh, Chief Ash over there last weekend and also been getting a lot of feedback from both. Uh, business owners and tenants that live in the area have been impacted by our signage. And uh, talking to Bob, him and I both agreed we should take out. All the signs except for the ones next to the uh Tri-State Credit Union, because it's, it's, it's really causing a uh. A, a burden for some of the people that live up above and some of the apartments, the uh, some people say they have to drive. Uh, walk from back of the old firehouse, at nighttime it's dark back there and they're afraid to, to leave their car and walk in late at night, so. Uh, the recommendation from Bob was to, for us to take out the signs, except for that one square area. Which is closest to the um Tri-State Credit Union and also services the uh Thorbs and uh. Some of the other uh businesses downtown.
That makes, that makes sense, but I think, and I think people will understand, we could. Put it in a local law, I know, I know, Rob, but um, when we make the local laws or whatever. We, you know, it could be, you know how on, on snow, when we have snow, big snows, you don't park here, you don't park there. We can do that too, we could say no parking in the middle or whatever.
Yeah.
However, it works best, I, I'm not a parking.
And this, this issue keeps coming up and I'm not sure if it is, we did a local law recently and it was wrong, or we did the signage wrong. Or it's not being enforced or a combination thereof, and I would love to have you guys follow up on this and.
Actually, uh, we, we did pass a local law and that allowed us to put the signage in.
Right.
And we, and we did that, and I'm not sure the wording came out the best for.
So the law's good, but the signage is weird.
The signage is, is, is not um, I don't know how you wanna put. Clear, it's not clear, it's not clear for people, cause some of the signs say parking from, no overnight parking or parking from. Yes, overnight parking from ten to seven, so does that mean you can't, you can, you can't park there during the daytime? So it's a little confusing, but I think. For everybody's benefit, we should take out half of the signs and just leave that one area for. Uh, as it is, that there's no overnight parking, which is the closest spots to uh the credit union.
So when Bob, when, when uh Neil gets back, can we have uh meet with uh him and uh Chief Ash in the parking lot? And figure out and get, hash that out and figure out what the correct signage is and.
Yes, please.
Well, I think the signage, I think the signage will work where, where it should be next to the credit union. But the other, I think the other signs should just come out.
So we need to get together with the police department and highway department and, and I, I'd be glad to be involved or whatever and we can. Get that resolved because it is very.
And but we still wanna keep that, the parts of the law where, you know, it says. Yeah, you can't put, like, we wanna keep out the unregistered vehicles still and all that stuff.
Yeah, the, the problem.
We're not gonna touch the law, we're gonna talk about the signs.
Right.
The problem, the problem was that, the, the problem was that long-term parkers were taking all the spots next to the credit union. Spots that were used at Thorbs and uh some of the other businesses. This eliminated that by having people parking a little bit farther away, but it pushed them actually too far away and there was concerns about safety.
I would say that whole side of Church Street, that, the side where you park facing Church Street should, should be.
Well, listen, let's, let's have you guys take this on, Bobby's gonna take the lead on it. Talk with Neil, talk with Chief, uh Kevin, Deb involved, and whatever you guys decide, just review it with Andy to make sure. We're not doing what's, doing the wrong thing that the law states, and then you guys can report back to us next.
We're changing the law, right.
Right, you guys have made the changes, figured it out and.
We might, we might not have enough time. Yep.
Alright, great, thank you, anything else Deb?
No, I would just say that whoever's make, whatever signs we put up. This is just from working on newspapers and doing yearbooks and all that for a million years. We should always have somebody else proofread it, cause Rob, you know, as a teacher, you know what you're saying, you have the background information in your head. But you can't assume prior knowledge of the other people, so we need to have somebody, somebody else look at it.
We sorta did that and it just didn't quite work, but we'll get, we'll get it, we'll get it right this time.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, and Bob Decker, I know you just hopped on, but this would be the time where any of the committees are involved, you'd. Report on anything or discuss anything or ask questions, anything, Bob, do you have any questions or anything?
No, following right along.
Alright, awesome, thank you, uh, that's it for committee reports, I think I got everybody, yeah, I got everybody. Alright, uh, next, old business, this remains on, uh, the thing that never dies because we never get to it. Uh, I'll try to get to it next week and I have a motion to table this, so it stays on the agenda.
Motion.
Thank you Craig.
Second.
Thank you, I think that was Emily, any further discussion on this? All in favor, tabling? Aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, last week we talked about, oh, oh, our last week, last meeting we talked about a water bill, um. You guys requested more information, unfortunately Denise is not here. Uh, Marie, you may have some more information to offer, but the basic gist is uh, there was a penalty applied that should not have been. And the motion, uh, the request is to adjust to simply remove uh the penalty. And to adjust the usage to what it should have been, not what it automatically became because of the uh issue. Marie, do you wanna add anything to that?
No, I think he got that about right. But basically you just need to take, you needed to take the three hundred and fifty dollar penalty off.
Rob, I'll make a motion that we table this till next meeting, since we don't have the information, right?
I mean, there isn't really much more information to have than given.
It's pretty much what happens where you go.
Well, I thought we were gonna get a marked up copy, I thought the issue was that the, the copy we had was marked up. And our local law says we can't adjust for usage issues and the bill we were approving was marked up.
For the, all for the usage, it was marked up because originally we never had a meter. And then they gave him the meter, it didn't get put in, it did get put in, but it got put in after the bills were already run. And we had put on and adjusted, used the estimated usage we have to do on the different, though, but it doesn't read. You know, wasn't reading. It did be adjusted to it and then we'd already put the.
Right, I'm going to use your, uh, your microphone, um, I, I think all we need is something written up for that so that we can approve it, right? I mean, the last thing I saw that we had written just had an adjustment to the usage with no explanation. Did we get an email to explain it?
I don't think Denise has had a chance to send an email, but we will try to get you guys out an email.
Alright, then well, I guess we will.
We can do it, we have a meeting in two weeks or whatever, right?
Yep. Yeah, well, well, uh, we'll put this on the.
Okay, we'll, we'll send an email, there's not much more to address, but be happy to get you an email.
No, it's, it's, it's fine, it's fine Craig.
I, I just think we need to document what we're saying is all, is all, I'm not saying anything else other than. We don't have any of what you just said written down.
Okay.
And it just looks like we're adjusting usage.
Trustees, are, are you uh in agreement to table this until next uh, next meeting?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to uh table.
Second.
Thank you, uh, for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? I'm gonna oppose this one. Cause I want, I want this to be done, but we'll still make sure it's done next time, so that's all. Alright, um, new business, let's fire through these real fast. We have a resolution authorizing the levy of unpaid water, sewer and refuse collection bills, let me see if I can find. This is document thirteen, if you have the attachments, I'm trying to find document thirteen, found it. Share it, Andy, do you wanna uh highlight anything briefly, are you still with us Andy and are you still awake?
Uh, both here and awake, it's been really entertaining. So this really, really generally is just levying the unpaid water, sewer and refuse collection charges. This is in the ordinary course, this was not allowed last year under uh state legislation due to the COVID. There is a period now where the re-levy can happen in conjunction with the twenty-one, twenty-two real property tax bills. Denise has prepared the abstract of that, that will, will be attached to this resolution and that forwarded to the county for the preparation of the tax bills.
So Andy, would that be two years' worth of sewer and water revolviage, no?
No, it, it, it's not, um, the, the, the state legislation simply did not allow the re-levy of unpaid water bills. Last year, or, or to, for the year prior, simply because the economic impact of that. There, there is now a window which would allow the re-levy for last year's unpaid water bills. And Marie, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that's correct, the list Denise was putting together is for one year.
That's right, Andy.
Yeah, so it's only.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So this is the resolution authorizing a levy of unpaid water, sewer and refuse collection charges, this has been on the screen. Uh, for trustees who are new at this, when we have a resolution, I read through at least the resolved parts. And then we uh ask for someone to offer it, uh, and then second it, so now therefore be it resolved by the. Board of Trustees of the Village of Hueson Falls in regular session, till the convenience follows. The Board of Trustees of the Village of Hueson Falls hereby directs that all unpaid water, sewer and refuse collection charges as set forth. And the abstract attached here too, including all applicable penalties, be levied upon the real property of such owners as set for. On the attached abstract and hereby further directs village treasurer and our village clerk to transmit such abstract to the county of Rensselaer in connection. With the preparation of real property tax bills for the village of Hueson Falls or fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Or in such, uh, in the event such transmission to the county of Rensselaer has been completed, this resolution shall be due to a retroactive effect of the date thereof. Looking for uh someone to offer the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Thank you Emily, in a second.
Second.
Any discussion questions? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote, Marie, take it away.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Great, thank you, passes. Um, I should be sharing the spreadsheet, wanna have a discussion uh regarding the COVID nineteen precautions as it relates to the water, sewer and community service. Uh, let's start with water and community and uh sewer first, currently we are operate, our operators are on. Basically, uh, they're rotating which days they're covering, um, we've had a couple of requests to. Get them back on some, on, on full-time duty, um, I will address the water first because that one's a little bit, I think, easier. Um, both are, are fine either way, they're, they're content either way with whatever the board decides. Um, and they can mask and, except for the little office space, they have fairly large buildings to uh, to handle safely. Um, on the sewer side, it's a little bit more complicated because, um. And if, if they're in the, the, the little sort of sewer plant building, there's not really much ventilation and it's brick, so. Obviously they would be masked because that's what we do, as a village and that's what we expect our employees to be doing when they're inside, especially in tight corners. Um, it's a little bit more concerning, um, but trustees, sort of what are your thoughts on um bringing them back full-time? Or keeping it like it is, or keep, or some.
My, my first question is, Rob, are they, are these employees all been vaccinated?
That's a good question, I don't know if legally that would matter in our decision-making, I don't know if we can require them or tie it.
Of course, I, I, I don't believe you can mandate though employees to be, to be vaccinated, I don't believe, but. I'm just saying, if, if they are, I would feel comfortable moving forward to bring to work.
So, so I have a, a different question, Rob, and, and I, um. How many hours per week are they actually working currently?
Uh, they're splitting up the time in the plants, they are doing other stuff. Um, not at the plant, but if you think about it, it's similar to the way it was when COVID started. Um, in a sense, there are work hours that are there that aren't being covered because of the necessities. Of COVID and the social distancing side of things. And I think we're in the same situation that most municipalities are in, is when do you bring back who at what point, full-time or whatever? DPW is a little bit of a different beast because they have larger facilities and they spend a lot of their time outside or solo in, in vehicles.
So I guess what I'm asking is, if, if we found a way to get everybody working full-time and being socially distant. I don't see necessarily see a need to change it, but if we've only been having guys working. Twenty-five hours when they're supposed to be working forty, then we need to get on this and, and address it. If, what I don't wanna do is if we've already figured out a better way to cover the plant. By shifting hours and spreading it out over the entire time. I don't necessarily think going, having two guys go back to Monday to Friday forty hours a week is any better. If, if we're getting the full amount of work out of everybody and everything else.
Well.
I don't wanna arbitrarily go back to something that wasn't it, that wasn't as good as what we have now.
Well, alright, um. Couple of things, first off, the water guys, they split up duty seven days a week, they do have to do checks on weekends. Um, in the past, they've kind of balanced and made their own schedule and who covers the weekends. Um, if you remove the safety issue of it, which is a hard thing to do because that has been our definition and our support has been to make sure they, they've been safe. If you remove that, there is a net loss of what we're paying versus hours worked. That's okay for what has been going on and that was dictated by the circumstances and absolutely was the right thing to do, I'm not stating anything else. But in terms of what you asked, in terms of, you know, are they working twenty-five hours a week? Um, instead, by getting paid forty, that is what's going on, and the question is, do we wanna bring it back? I know sometimes they'll be involved in some DPW projects outside, or they can do some, you know, summer work like mowings and grounds and the various uh water locations. Um, my general consensus uh from the water guys was they were fine with coming back uh full-time. Um, a little bit more concern on the sewer side of things.
Well, if we're paying them for forty, well, let's give forty hours out of them somehow, let's adapt how they work, where they work, but if you're paying them for forty, let's get forty. There's gotta be a way that they can work safely. And get stuff done, you know, I mean, we have to move on here, so let's, let's think out of the, outside of the box and find a way. To get them working, they're making their money, and maybe we find new ways for efficiency and getting more things done. We gotta take this chance maybe, but I think if we're gonna pay them, let's find a way to get them to work and uh. Do it safely, there's gotta be a way, maybe take, you know, do a, do a. Uh, ask them, you know, let's see what they think about what can they do. You know what I mean?
I don't think there's much difference between what the highway and the sewer and, and the water guys are doing. I mean, if I get down to the village highway garage. I mean, if I get down to the village highway garage any given day or around noon time, they're all sitting together eating their lunch, the water, the sewer. Or and and the highway guys. So I don't I don't know what the difference is at this point.
Well, um Andy, is this the kind of thing we need to make a decision on? Or is this the kind of thing or I as the mayor can talk to department heads and and start working and plan and report back to the board? Uh what seems to be our goal of getting them back to sort of a as as regular, close to forty hours and doing it safely as possible.
Right, a couple of thoughts. One, you should confer with the department heads. I think it's a good practice to report back to your board on that. Whatever ultimately is decided, just confirm. I I'm happy to look at that. Uh there's potentially some labor law issues associated with the workplace. That Elaine might be able to pass off on just when they get back to a different work schedule that's been happening. Uh from the past year, but no, you should reach out to the department heads, get some input on that. I think that's a good approach. And revisit it with the board.
Okay, if we're if we're concerned about them being in the same small structure together, why not take those people? If we're short-staffed on the highway and move those extra hours to the highway department rather than just the sewer or water.
Uh and that's that's an issue that Elaine should pass through.
Yeah, because that's contracts and duties and such.
Correct, yep.
Yeah.
Yep, they're doing, they're plowing snow and other things as well, so the the duties really aren't changing.
Uh we we don't wanna, we wanna get right on this, don't you think? I really.
Well, there's, the reason we we were hesitant about that is because if they're working in close quarters and and and, you know, as an example, let's use the water operators. If they're in close quarters and one of them has COVID and doesn't know it and accidentally gives it to the other one, they're quarantining, we have no one operating the plant. And that's that's big because then we gotta talk to county or we gotta find on municipalities, see if they can lend someone out to do various checks. Um that's the situation we're kind of trying to avoid. The summer hour is easier though. And I think that's to to your point, to Kevin's point. So I think trustees, if it's alright, I will have some discussions with department heads, get back to you in early May, especially when Neil's back. Um and I'll report back to you guys at the next meeting.
Perfect, thank you, Rob.
Just to say that Rob, I Neil did have on on his report that he would, he would like to see the sewer and highway guys get back. Or the sewer and water guys get back so that he can have additional manpower as well.
Yep, yep. Alright, I'll have conversations with them and I'll report back to you guys.
Okay.
Alright, now, community service is a little bit trickier because when we look around and and we had an email thread with um. Neil, Andy, Bobby, um myself and and Jerry and and chief. And and Jerry lists out a bunch of legitimate concerns. Now, I have had people reach out to me and say, hey, I have uh community service. Or my child has community service hours. We're trying to get this done and over with. Uh but at the same time, there are local municipalities who have not resumed this yet and Jerry's concerns uh about, you know. Do we require vaccinations? Can we require vaccinations? What if somebody tests positive? Are there legal concerns that could fall back on us? Uh I don't I don't have a good answer for this. I wanted to bring it up. Andy, did you wanna speak to this uh at all before we pass on to the board?
Well, very briefly, uh I'm aware of of, as Rob said, many communities that have not started up. The community service aspect of this yet, simply because of the uncertainty in the midst of vaccinations, in the midst of. Uh potential transmissions, people reporting in, is there need for health checks, things like that? And and many municipalities have simply not started to back up as of this point. So I just throw that out there.
Trustees' thoughts?
I don't think the state has issued any guidance on this, have they? They've issued guidance on a lot of stuff.
Oh, I do know is the sheriffs have a um community service component, which is a little bit different. Cause the people come from the jail, but I notice they're starting to go come back out again, but oh, their workforce is only usually two or three people. Or normally they would have ten or twelve people working together.
I don't have any.
I know Jerry certainly has some reservations.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess I guess my only thought is if is if we're gonna ask Jerry to resume doing what he was doing. Jerry probably might need some training guidance on how to handle all of this. You know, I mean, that maybe, I I don't think I don't think it's fair to ask Jerry to resume doing that without giving him some guidance.
That's fair.
I I agree a hundred percent with like, yeah, no, I agree.
Alright, I think we have to. Sorry, Bobby. It just sounds like we kind of are collectively don't have enough answers yet, so maybe if the state was um. Um makes a couple steps and then gives some guidance, we could return, but otherwise it sounds like we're all need to keep it, keep it off uh for now. Okay, Maria, remind me to uh respond to the people who uh reached out to me about that and I'll pass it on to them. Thank you.
Rob, are the courts still giving out community service?
Every time I think I know what's going on with the court, it shuts down, so I I literally have no idea.
Okay, I'll find out. I'll I'll reach out. I'll check into that with Holly.
Okay.
And give, yeah, okay.
Thank you. Uh we brought this up earlier. Um the next item uh is discussion regarding the publishing the bids for curbside solid waste collection. It's document five. Um we redid the the dates, um so we can put this out. We wanna put this out, advertise it tomorrow. So that uh it's out, so our swamp can call and um. And vendors have actually been looking. They've been wondering where our bid was because they knew it was it was coming, which is a good sign for us. Um and the schedule that we put forward and we did take some good comments from Bobby and I think Craig or maybe someone else, I can't remember. And we made those changes. Um we did change the the thing Bobby that you spotted earlier, remove that one line about.
Oh, about the about the residential number, resident uh single residences, yes.
Yeah, that didn't make any sense, so that's out. Um so are there any questions on this? I'm trying to find the document. If you don't have any questions. Sorry, Bobby, go.
One, just now, say, say it's someone other than county waste. If it's a a new contractor, are they required to build, to bring their waste to Ur Swama? Or can they bring it, haul it to wherever they choose to?
Uh let me. This does require bringing it to an Ur Swama disposal facility since the village remains part of the authority and the authority.
I thought so. That's, I just wanted to confirm that, cause I know there's there's, I know that we've had interest from out-of-state parties. And I wasn't sure how that would work.
Alright, any other questions on this? Uh our recommendation hope is that we can approve this, so I'm looking for a motion uh to publish bids for curbside solid waste collection transportation.
Motion.
Thank Emily.
Second.
Second, Bob, any further questions, discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Post?
Aye.
Sensions? Great, thank you. Carries. Uh the next item for bid is really more of a of a formal thing, but I wanted to make sure it was there. Um there's an Eagle Scout project that has been in the works. Um he spoke with Neil. He's gonna be putting. Um am I sharing the PowerPoint slideshow right now?
Yep, it's up.
Yes.
I've got it.
Thank you. Sorry, that's weird on this end. Um he's got a a project. He's ready to move on. They, we've, we've. It's something we've been kind of had an eye on right, but even before COVID and then COVID happened and everything slowed down. He's ready to go on this. He'll be, he would be installing three picking tables and I think two grills. Uh in the past water, past the water plant over the little tiny bridge on the left before the parking lot. That Neil made over sort of back close to the tree line where historically they had been existing in the past.
No, that's great because uh they're very nice at one point and then they all disappeared. That's great.
So if you guys are okay with this, and I'm okay with this, I'm looking for a motion to authorize me to sign off on this Eagle Scout project.
How motions?
Thank you, Bob.
Second.
Thank you, everyone else who seconded that, seconded by the rest of the clan. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Carrie's great. Um Maria, please make sure I I pass it on to them tomorrow. Alright, um landfill. We have a discussion regarding proposed financing for leechage collection and pumping improvements. At the landfill. Um for for newer trustees, um. I'm gonna, I'm in a sense, I'm gonna pass this on to either Andy or Dave or both to briefly discuss this. Um there will be more we discuss later in executive session. There are certain things we can't discuss in uh public meetings. So I'm just gonna say that. Andy, um I'll bring up the document. Do you wanna summarize real fast? Document fifteen.
Summarize what that's about.
Sure. Yep, I'll defer to Dave on kinda the the need for this, but what's in front of you is been prepared by the village's bond council. It's a proposed bond resolution authorizing financing to cover uh improvements at the landfill for leechage collection and disposal. This arises out of the work that was originally started last fall. Uh additional work was identified that needed to be done. Uh DEC certainly is requiring uh that the work be completed. Um the resolution uh is to allow uh up to one hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Worth of bonds to cover the the estimated costs. Uh it will be immediately effective after the estoppel period, that is notice of the adoption of the resolution, if it is in fact adopted. Gets published, uh period of twenty days for any challenge. And then the the resolution is immediately effective and the the financing can move forward. Um I'll also note for the record that it it's certainly our opinion that any work is being done. Really, as part of the overall uh DEC enforcement matter, has the landfills been identified as a hazardous waste site? There is a consent order in place, the original work giving rise to this work, what was done through an interim remedial measure pursuant to that order. So we view this as a type-two action under seeker and that's the extent to the bond resolution in front of you. I'll defer to Dave on uh really the need uh for the work to be completed.
Uh very quickly, what happened here is as the village or its contractors were. Proceeding with the interim remedial measures, there came a time when it became clear that the sewer line, which connected the. The leachate system or the leachate collection point to the main trunk of the sewer system had a lot of problems with it. There was a problem with the sizing of it and it was finally concluded that that whole line basically has to be replaced. If this leachate collection system is gonna be reliable going forward in terms of transporting the leachate to the to the sewer line. And DEC has been, let's say, somewhat impatient with the delay here. And I've explained to the department on a number of occasions that the village was not in a position to simply authorize someone to go ahead and do the work. Particularly now that the work was well in excess of what had been contemplated when the IRM process was started. And the village simply did not have either the funds on hand nor any authorization to expend those those funds. So once this is in place, that work will proceed and it's kind of a crucial thing that it go ahead. Because it will then allow uh the main response at the landfill, which at this point consists of the remedial investigation. And feasibility study for which uh Honeywell is bearing essentially a hundred percent of the costs. Those costs are significant. It allows those measures to proceed. So that perhaps a year from now, we'll have a pretty good idea as to what the final remedy will be at the landfill. So that's, that's the long and short of it.
Alright, trustees, any questions on this? Alright, hearing none, this is a resolution authorizing improvements to the leechage collection and pumping system at the landfill site in and for the village. Of Who's Falls or runs to the county in New York. It's total maximum estimated costs of one hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred and fifty. Acts and authorizing the issuance of one hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred and fifty bonds of said village to pay the costs thereof. Andy, I feel like we've gone over all of the various sections of this.
And and I'll confirm, Rob, you have. Uh this is uh the subject to local finance law provisions. Uh again, this will be subject to, in a stopple period, it certainly authorizes the uh village treasurer. To execute any and all financing documents uh to fulfill uh the financing. And um it's properly in front of you for consideration.
Alright, trustees, any questions? I'd love to have some great witty wisdom and banter, but really just it needs to happen.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Kevin. I'll give that to Craig. Uh any discussion on this? Let's do a roll call vote and again, feel free to abstain if you're new and not quite sure what's going on. That's totally fine. Uh I'm I'm yes.
Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Uh trustee, let's see, who am I missing? Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Marby.
Yes.
And trustee. Decker.
Yes, yes.
Did you get Pine too?
I did.
Okay, sorry.
Yes.
Alright, great. Alright, thank you, guys. Um passes.
I make a motion, we buy Maria a new microphone.
Yes, please.
I have a suspicion, uh you have some extra sound on, so Marie, we'll work on that before the next meeting. Cause I think it's uh, I think your microphone volume in the computer is too high and it's shattering the signal. Sorry, I'm going sound nerd on everybody. I apologize.
Okay, I can hear you guys all perfectly, sorry.
It is, uh it's fantastic. We'll play it back for you later. Um.
And and Maria, on that resolution, if I just uh could, you you need to uh complete the certification. And publish the stopple notice as soon as possible to start the twenty-day period.
Okay.
Alright, and our um final item is, or not final, second to last item, penultimate item. Is this resolution authorizing the acceptance of temporary easement on Woods Brook Stream Improvement Project, which you cannot see because I have not shared it yet. My apologies. Andy, can you quickly summarize again?
I can. This is in connection with the upstream uh Woods Brook Drainage Improvement Project that's being done in in coordination with the town. Uh in doing the work, the village contractors need to get access to certain property. The town likewise, and the county likewise, will be getting some easements that they require. This is a temporary easement over one particular piece of property. Um I know uh Barton, Linda, Judas. Denise, I think Mark Surdam and the property owner sat down, uh went through the the project. Uh went through the terms of the temporary easement. The property owner has no issue with it. This is simply the resolution accepting the temporary easement, which will run basically for the term of the construction project.
Trustees, any questions before I I read this? Apologies for my eating. It's been like six hours. Resolution authorizing acceptance of temporary easement on Woods Brook Stream Improvement Project. Um Andy has explained all the where I statements as it relates to the Woods Brook Grant project we're doing with the town. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Who's Falls in regular session, duly convenable as follows. One, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Who's Falls hereby approves the acceptance of a temporary easement granted by Barry Laporte. And Nancy Laporte in the form attached here too is exhibit A regarding the completion of activities to increase floodwater storage capacity in and around. The Woods Brook. Need someone to offer the resolution?
Motion.
Thank you, Bobby, and someone to second. Thank you, Craig. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Marie, please.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Decker?
Yes.
Trustee Marby. Mayor, Mayor Ellen.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
I was definitely hearing yeses before I heard Marie's and I don't know if that's just you guys being proactive or.
Also, yes.
I enjoyed it.
I had to, thanks, Craig, I I can't hear me, so I'm sorry.
All right, great passes, thank you. And finally, this is, we're just looking for a motion to confirm destruction of records pursuant to the records retention requirements. For those of you who are new, there's strict rules that dictate when you're allowed to dispose of records after a certain amount of time, depending on the certain type of record it is, we follow all those procedures. We're just looking for a motion to make this official.
Motion.
Thank you, Bobby, second?
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions? Any discussion? That's the word. Hearing none, all in favor? I?
Bye.
Hi.
opposed or abstentions? All right, hearing none, that's it. Trustees, do you have any other business you want to bring up in front of the regular meeting in public? All right, hearing none, we are, I will undertake a motion to enter executive session to discuss pending enforcement matter and to seek advice from council. Note that there will be no business conducted after the executive session. And Bob Decker, I'm sure you're thinking, what did I sign myself up to for a four-hour meeting? This is the longest I've ever had in four years. It's not normally like this, but thank you trustees for all of your.
Hey, I'm down here in Florida, I'm just loving this.
Loving our face. Right, hearing no other comments, I'm looking for that motion to enter executive session.
Now, all motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Craig, all in favor?
I.
I.
Hi.
Opposed or abstentions? All right, hearing none, we are going to enter executive session at 9:50 PM. We will have no more business, so I'll be stopping the recording. Thank you very much, trustees, I'll be opening the other meeting up in a moment so you guys can sign off and take a minute or two and then we'll get get on in the other meeting. Thank you, guys, very much.
Doug, are you still there?
I, Doug?
Are you still on, Doug?
Uh, let me see if he's still on.
That's all right, I'll catch him in the morning, I've got a few things to send to him, I'll send him out first thing.
Yeah, I don't think he's on, it's just, I think the eagle's on.
Okay.
Have a good executive, good night.
Thank you.
What do you do? What do you do, Rob, send out another email with a new link?
The email I sent you actually had the below it had the second link for the executive session. You just gotta wait for me to start the moving, the meeting and accept you guys and then we're on. See you there in a minute.
Okay.
I'm gonna kick you guys off, so rejoin in a minute on, go back to the email. Kevin, I will send you the link so you can access it via phone, right? And.
Yes.
Okay, great, I'll do that in just a moment and I'll see you in there in a moment. Emily, I'm kicking you off, go join the other meeting.